Good morning, my name is Phyllis Kabasiak, I'm the councillor for Division Three. I'm going to be chairing the meeting today and calling the meeting to order at nine o'clock, July sixth, twenty twenty one, the Committee of the Whole Parkland County. So, welcome everyone who is watching livestream, our meeting is now in session. Due to the COVID pandemic, COVID nineteen pandemic, Parkland County is just coming into the final meeting numbers here, continuing our practice of holding virtual meetings. And we'll conduct this meeting using electronic communication under provision of Parkland County's meeting procedure by law twenty fifteen oh six and section one nine nine of the Municipal Government Act. We'll proceed with today's Committee of the Whole meeting. I'm going to do a roll call first of all, I'm going to ask each councillor by division, starting with the mayor to indicate, say your name, your division, and indicate present, starting with the mayor.
Mayor Rochegas, present.
Councillor Emily S. Jensen, Division One, present.
Councillor John McNab, Division Five, present.
Tracy Melnick, councillor for Division Six, present.
Thank you, I'm councillor Kabasiak, Division Three, present. And I did have regrets, councillor Daryl Hollins, Division Four, is not able to join us. So with that, we have a quorum for today's meeting and I would ask everyone to please ensure your telephone or microphone is muted unless you've been called on to speak. And just to go through the following procedural measures going to be followed today to ensure procedural fairness and transparency. So each time a committee member speaks, they'll first state their name followed by their division. And the Chair will read out each addenda item and ask the Chief Administrative Officer to introduce the matter. Each committee member will be asked to provide comments on the agenda item in order of speaking division, we're starting with Division Five today. And once a committee member has spoken, I'm going to ask if there's any further comment. This process is going to be repeated until there's no further commentary debate. And after each motion is put on the floor, I'm just going to do a reverse vote if council's okay. I'm going to ask if there are any opposed and then I will indicate if the motion is carried or failed. On today's agenda are the following items, item four point one is adoption of the June fifteenth, twenty twenty one Committee of the Whole meeting minutes. At nine fifteen, we have public input, item five point one, and I understand Mr Grant Dorash will be joining us, he's registered speaker. And Ms Williams will be admitting him into the meeting to address council. At nine thirty, we have an appointment, five point two, an appointment with CIBC Wood Gundy. Five point three, a ten o'clock appointment with regarding the Hamlet reinvestment strategy update. Item five point four, eleven fifteen AM, we have an appointment, the COVID nineteen vaccine outreach and education. Item B one, project management office PMO update. D point one, D one, we have the sustainability policy, C S O two. Then we have item D two, the Wabham communication strategy update. And item F one is the land use bylaw optimization strategy update. Eight point one is the rural municipalities of Alberta contact newsletter. Item eight two is the Federation of Canadian Municipalities update. I'm going to ask in order of each division if there are any additions or deletions to today's committee agenda, Mr Mayor.
Nothing to add, thank you.
Councillor Johnson.
No additions or deletions, thank you.
Councillor McNab.
Thank you, Madam Chair, no additions or deletions for me.
Thank you, councillor Melnick.
No additions or deletions, thank you.
Thank you, are there any additions or deletions from administration to today's agenda?
Thank you, Madam Chair, no additions or deletions from administration.
Okay, thank you, with that, may I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Madam Chair, councillor John McNab, Division Five, bring forward a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone opposed? Saying none, that motion is carried. We have the consent agenda, items four point one, the adoption of the June fifteenth, twenty twenty one Committee of the Whole meeting minutes. Item eight point one is the rural municipalities of Alberta contact newsletter. And eight point two is the Federation of Canadian Municipalities update. Are there any additions or deletions to the consent agenda? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Tracy Melnick, Division Six, I'll put forward that motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you, any, anyone opposed to the consent agenda as presented? Saying none, that motion is carried. We'll move to item B one, project management office update, Ms Swain, if you'd like to speak to that.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'd like to invite Mark Fitch, Director of Strategic Initiatives, and Stefan Vandenberg, construction management contractor, to present the project management office update and answer any questions the committee may have, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Swain, we're happy to be here today to present the updates for the PMO office. And the projects that we'll be going over is the County Services Building, salt contamination, Parkland County Transfer Station, Ant Whistle Pool and Community Hub, West Central Fire Hall, Atchison Fire Hall remediation, and Sundance Boat Launch. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr Vandenberg to go through each project.
Thank you, Mr Fitch, Madam Chair, Mr Mayor councillors, thank you for the opportunity. And with that, I'll jump right into the project, starting with the CSP salt contamination. The county is committed to the responsible cleanup of the swell mitigation and groundwater mitigation at the current CSP salt storage location. The contaminants originate from the county salt mixing operation, so hydrochlorides absorb into the soils and spread to the groundwater. Our schedule right now, delineation recommendations have been completed in August twenty twenty. And tendered construction right now is scheduled to start end of summer to fall twenty twenty one. The current state is the consultants have completed delineation recommendation report, report for the submitted to Alberta Environment Land and Water Act. And we are currently negotiating land access for final design and final design with the landowner. The Land and Water Act approval will be required, which have a timeline of six months. That's why we're moving into late summer, late summer is also a very good time to do a project like this. The team value adds at this stage is early stage constructability review, budget analysis, procurement strategy, market analysis. At this stage, like I said, when we got, when we have the landowners, the final landowner approval, we will be going on to the next step, which would be tendering. Okay. The Parkland County Transfer Station, they're enlarging the current weight station building to improve customer service, adding on two additional kiosks and roadways for traffic efficiency, increasing amount of bin location and improving the site grading. The initial schedule was slated on November twenty twenty. We have completed the project with the contractor on board in March twenty twenty one, substantial completion posted. There is small seasonal deficiencies that's being completed, but the roadway has been paved and all major deficiencies has been completed, right now it's a bit of a cleanup act. The staff offices will be completed in fall twenty twenty one. The transfer station is ready for full operation from the PMO perspective. And the contractor is off site for the most part, other than small deficiencies. We're done with the constructability review, there's some budget negotiations right now to close out the budget and be done with the project going on at this stage. Okay, the Ant Whistle Pool and Community Hub is a year-round facility intended to provide a variety of services in the Ant Whistle Evansburg area, including a library, seasonal outdoor swimming pool, rentable multipurpose space and leasable tenant space. We have reached substantial completion in October twenty twenty. The pool opening July first through a booking system to begin, and the community hub is open now as well. The contractor have been off site for a while and project has been completed. The regrading and resloping of the alleyways is something that's in process to make sure that we don't, that no flooding occurs due to the additional hard surfaces that, that, that the building creates, created. We do have some ongoing warranty, rectification items and some small cleanup items like picnic tables and just mostly warranty and some small, small items going on. But the project is basically ready to be closed out. The construction team value add, no change order that increased the construction budget as of yet. Where's central fire hall, the county is underway with the construction of the new fire hall in Wabham, and the new fire hall will serve west and central parkland county and will also enhance associated services with Wabham and surrounding areas. The construction schedule is October twenty twenty to November twenty twenty one, that schedule still stands. Current status, the building has been completely enclosed, all interior slabs have been poured, the drywall is seventy percent completed on the first floor. Construction team value add, extensive value engineering and design review for risk mitigation is ongoing. Ongoing constructability review, we do have a couple of change orders that is end user driven, but nothing that has been pushed, nothing that pushes us over budget. Atchison Fire Hall, the high water table unsuitable drainage have eroded the subgrade under the exterior slabs and asphalt, causing concerns that the subgrade under the building is basically being eroded. Parkland County have been monitoring the building and will remediate where necessary. The schedule for this was April twenty twenty to December twenty twenty one, the monitoring is going, is still going on, we are still currently monitoring the building. Some of the regrading and drainage work have been completed. The survey and monitoring mostly that's going on now is for the exterior of the, of the building. The interior of the building, we've determined that right at this moment, although we are doing a little bit of survey, is not at risk. The bigger problem is at the exterior of the building. There's significant underground water present, our biggest risk is the building is constructed in a wetland. We've got very high hydrostatic pressure when constructing, when constructing drainage improvement. So it makes it extremely difficult, we can't just dig a hole and throw in a drain or a trench. Basically, the moment we dig a hole, it fills up with water, if we dig a trench, we create a river. So we're working through those risks at the moment to see what the best path forward would be. Construction team value add, in-depth investigation determine, determine that no remediation is required at this time under the building footprint, which is, which will result in a time and significant cost savings. And then ongoing risk mitigation to make sure that the fire trucks and Brian Cornforth and his team has constant access and that they, that they don't get into trouble when they have to leave the building or get back due to swell heap or something like that. Wabham boat launch, the Wabham Southside Boat Launch facility with funding, facility with funding support from Parkland County and the province of Alberta. Parkland County Council approved funding for the land lease and construction of a new south side boat launch that is set to be completed in twenty twenty one, the new boat launch will include removal of the existing facility and its components, shoreline armoring and new precast boat launch. Roadways and parking upgrades will also be completed, the schedule is July twenty twenty to October twenty twenty one. Current status, we've approved Land and Water Act approvals, we've received Land and Water Act approvals, the tender drawing specifications we completed, the project has been tendering and we are currently negotiating the award. Or we've received it and we're currently negotiating the award. Project, we've got several mandatory scheduling milestones due to nesting season and fish spawning season. A nesting season is not an issue anymore, the site has been cleared, so that risk has been mitigated. The fish spawning season, we can only be in the water until September thirtieth, I believe. And then from there on out, we can't do any shore armoring or anything in the water. The construction team value add, managing all stakeholders to ensure overall project satisfaction, there is quite a bit of stakeholders internal and external. And some, our partners have had some staff changes which make it difficult on our side, but we're working through that. Ensuring the scheduled dates are met and the project comes in budget and coordinating with the consultants and contractor to ensure a successful project completion. And I think that's it on my side. Is there any?
Thank you very much, we appreciate that information, before I get into any questions or comments, just want to keep with our, our public input schedule here. Ms Swain, Ms Williams, do we have members of the public who would like to address council?
Thanks, Madam Chair, I believe Ms Williams has let one member of the public in. So I will ask if Mr Grant Dorash is in the meeting.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, yes, we can, Mr Dorash, welcome, just before you begin your presentation, I just wanted to, it's councillor Phyllis Kabasiak, I'm chairing the committee meeting of the whole today and just want to indicate that public comments are important to us. It's not a time for dialogue, the purpose of public input is for you as a taxpayer to inform Committee of Whole of matters that you want brought to our attention. And if you have any specific questions, staff will, if they don't have your contact information, get that information and be able to get back to you with responses to the questions you have. And I understand that you are the one person that we have attending our public input today. So with that, I welcome you, Mr Dorash, and ask if you'd like to proceed with your comments today. And thank you for bringing your information to council's attention.
I greatly appreciate this opportunity, thank you, Ms Kabasiak. You know, my comments today, I just want to follow up on what you've been hearing and what I shortly heard about the problems that you have in Wabham with your fire station. And I want to highlight, just by digging a hole, you sometimes get a lot of water. And it's very similar to the situation that we have on our property. I'm going to get to my comments and I appreciate council allowing me to provide further input in regard to the landholding we have had for some forty plus years, that is in close proximity to the Legend Estates property. I think it important to note that our landholding has not been without much input in the past to council on far too many issues that frankly have not been created by our activities, but by the illegal acts and activities by others who frankly did not respect the land use bylaw, the Water Act or any other regulation in place when it comes to drainage and water issues. I have had to personally attend far too many other hearings and meetings with Alberta Environment over the years that related to two landowners in particular who frankly did not believe that by merely filling in or digging ditches, you could somehow escape the reality that all the properties in that area in close proximity to Legend Estates will have the same development issues when it comes to drainage and water table issues. If you have the Google Earth image that was submitted to you last time, council, it will highlight the reality that groundwater, not surface water, is a very serious concern in that area and one for which approvals will be needed in order to respect the Water Act and Alberta environmental approvals in addition to land, excuse me, land use bylaw approval. The image highlights a still illegal ditch that was in large measure constructed to direct water east from the illegal pond that still remains and continues to send groundwater north onto our property through a culvert that was never intended to be the main water channel for water going north onto our property. I would hope council and the new council that will be shortly elected in the coming fall will recognize the importance that your roles have in making sure illegal ditching and works require much greater scrutiny and penalty for failure to abide by those regulations act and engineering studies that are needed prior to development in wetland areas. The action of two neighbours, both who failed to act in compliance with all acts, regulations and the land use bylaw have cost millions of dollars due to their demands and ridiculous notion of thinking commercial and residential developments should be a right and not done to protect the interests of new purchasers of their development. I wish to remind council that the selling of a property now requires a real property report minimally and other full disclosure, including all latent defects whereby a caveat emptor reality no longer applies. There are ample legal citations to support this fact and you will do no one a favor by not recognizing this fact and could be equally found liable for non-disclosure of in this situation, high water table levels and its impact on the new purchaser's development. I can only hope that going forward, Parkland council will recognize that in that area, specifically Legend Estates and the surrounding environments, including the Wagner Natural Area, will require by any new landowners to be in full compliance with all acts and regulations, including land use bylaw, to protect even the developers from themselves who quickly begin to realize their mistake in whatever development they propose for the property that they own. I thank you again for the time allowed this AM and trust you made the right decision last time by not using may, but incorporated with the Legends, within the Legends Estate bylaw, which I find is quite a, quite a bylaw variance that you had to enact there, given that mistake. Any other English word mandating that future developments in that area will require all proper licensing and certification for any property developed in that area, including engineering reports by registered APEGA hydraulic engineers, hydrologists, whatever you want to call them, to make sure we don't have the same debacle as debacle or whatever you pronounce that word these days in the future. And with that, I conclude my submission and thank you again for allowing me to speak this morning.
Dorash, I appreciate the time that you have spent, certainly over many, many years looking at legislation and county requirements on water, drainage, those types of issues. And I thank you very much for your comments and presentation today, bringing this to the attention again of council. Wish you a good day and thank you very much.
And with that, I will leave councillor Kabasiak.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Dorash, have a good day, bye bye. With that, Ms Swain, we will move back to the project management office update, I believe that the comments were I believe that the comments were concluded. And if there are any questions or comments, I'll open up to council. But first, I will ask for a motion to accept the report as information. Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to put that forward.
Thank you very much. I'd gladly put that motion forward. And that is that the project management office update be received for information as presented.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, do you have any comments or questions on the report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of questions I do have. On the slide presentation, it indicated that the transfer station had two additional kiosks added. I just want confirmation. Are there two additional kiosks that were added? Or is it there are now two kiosks at that transfer site?
Through Madam Chair to Mayor Shagis, there's now two kiosks on the site. The additional kiosks makes it two. There was one already, so there's only two kiosks.
Thank you. In regards to the Antwessel Pool, now that construction is completed and it's just deficiencies, do we have the final costs calculated for that project?
Through Madam Chair to Mayor Shagis, we haven't closed the project out. Finally, the regrading is the only item that's left. Hopefully, within the next couple of weeks here, we'll close that out and the decision will be made exactly what the direction that goes. And then we will have final cost for the project. We're not incurring any more additional costs on the building. It's just the regrading of that alleyway that's withholding it from closing.
Thank you for that. In respect to the Wobman Fire Hall, Mr. Vandenberg, you mentioned that an end user had identified some changes and it will be within, that change order will keep the project within budget. Was that, I'm just curious whether that change order request was put in by Parkland Fire Services? Was it on behalf of Alberta Health Services and the ambulance that will be located? Or was it for the medical practitioner?
Mayor Shagis, no, it came from, it's mostly for fire services. We, as I understand, we cannot entertain change orders, requests from Alberta Health Services or the medical practitioner unless that the budget for that is included or gets added to the budget for that. So it's mostly items for, to make the building safer or from the fire to increase efficiency for the firefighting staff.
Thank you for that. And last question that pertains to the Southside Wobman Boat Launch. It indicated that the provincial government had provided some funding. Was that through MSI or is there some additional funding that was provided through the government of Alberta? And that's my final question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Shagis. I'll have to defer that to either Ms. Wayne or Mr. Fitch.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Vandenberg. I see Dave Cross is on the line and he can speak to that.
Thank you, Ms. Wayne. Mr. Mayor, to all of council, the provincial government has not provided any funding towards the boat launch. It's funded completely through our municipal park reserve. Thank you. And sorry, through the chair to Mayor Shagis, all the budgets and where they're at will come on the next financial quarter report will be presented there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitch. Other comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, thank you very much for that update. And we'll look forward to the next quarterly financial statement for closing updated balances and this opportunity for further discussion there. With that, we have a motion from the mayor to accept the update as information. Is anyone opposed? Seeing none, that motion is carried. We have a 9:30 appointment. It's almost 9:30. I think by the time we introduce and get them ready for their appointment, we could move ahead with that so we could keep on schedule. Ms. Wayne, I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So our 9:30 appointment is a presentation from CIBC Woodgundy. So I'd like to welcome our guests, Mr. James Hobson and Mr. Chartchah Hall. Thank you. And I'll just wait a minute to see if our guests are here.
Thank you.
Good morning. I believe we're both here. I think James is online as well.
Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning. She put up the presentation here. James, do we have you on the line?
Yes.
Perfect. I just want to make sure everybody can see the screen here as well.
Looks good. Thank you.
Well, we'll just jump right in here. Well, good morning, Mayor and council. It's always a pleasure to be here to give you guys an economic update. A lot has changed since we were last here. We've seen quite a dramatic recovery, sort of as expected. Now, the question we get a lot is, what's next? Which industries are going to be impacted over the next six months and beyond? What does Alberta look like over the next couple of years? What should we expect from inflation, interest rates, unemployment? And we're here to give you sort of an update, sort of high level, on where we see things going in the near future. So just from sort of a 30,000-foot view, this chart here just shows you the real GDP since pre-pandemic until now. That's the red line. And then the gray line is sort of our forecast going forward. Now, clearly, there was a massive hit from COVID at the beginning of last year. Now, as expected, we've seen that dramatic recovery as things have reopened. Now, the second wave was actually not as bad as you might expect. The reason being is that, you know, things were starting to reopen, even though cases were spiking. So we still saw growth during that phase. Now, the third wave is sort of what we're still waiting for data on. And there is reason to believe that it'll be more of a hit to GDP than what we might expect. On the next slide, we'll kind of show you the reasoning. The reasoning for that is if we break it down by sector, by industry, when we're looking at GDP, the left, on the left side there, it shows you the top performing sectors. So things like wholesale, finance, real estate. These sectors have contributed about 25% or a quarter of all of Canada's GDP. That's the red bar shows you the GDP contribution. The gray bars, though, shows you the employment, how much of the population they employ. Now, although they contribute a large amount to GDP, they only employ about 10% of the population. So the first resurgence in growth that we've seen has been from those high-performing sectors, but they haven't been employing much of the population. Now, what we're wanting to see going forward is for that services sector to recover. So services, hospitality only accounts for about 5% of GDP, but they employ a much greater percent of the population, about 15%. So that's sort of where we're looking for a recovery going forward. And there's reasons to have some optimism on that front. If we go to the next slide. We've shown you sort of this concept in the past, but just to sort of reiterate because it is important. On the left there, it shows you the household savings rates, the personal deposits. Massive increase since the start of the pandemic. Reasons for this, there was a lot of uncertainty. Households and businesses sort of held on to cash, not knowing what the future looked like. And all of that fiscal stimulus, those SERB checks, a lot of them were actually saved, not spent, or used to pay down debt. People can't go out, they can't travel, they can't go to restaurants. So people are sitting on a lot of cash. Now, the theory here is that as things reopen with these vaccinations, obviously Alberta's pretty much open now, we would expect to see, on the right there, the biggest change in spending will be coming from services. So that is what we want to see, that cash sort of get unleashed as people have all that pent-up demand for the things that we haven't been able to do over the past year and a half. Now, on the next slide, so we always look to the US because they're about six months ahead of us. So they're sort of our leading indicator. This shows you, the blue line there is sort of the pre-pandemic growth trend, what the US was looking like before COVID hit. Now, the black line there shows you the consensus economic forecast for GDP growth in January. This is just to highlight how much things have changed. Back in January, economists around the world sort of saw the US recovering, but not nearly back to pre-pandemic levels. The black line obviously materially lower than that blue line. Now, if we fast forward to today, the latest forecast is that gray line. We see not only GDP rising back to where we were pre-pandemic trend, but actually overshooting by the middle of 2022. So the rebound has been robust. We knew it would be strong, but it's been stronger than we actually anticipated and quicker than we anticipated. So ideally, this is sort of what we would expect to happen in Canada as things reopen. We're a bit behind, about six months behind. But, you know, we should expect us to return to levels at least of 2019 trend, but probably above that trend. Now, this is sort of a hot topic in our industry is what's happening with inflation. The headline numbers lately are looking like they're rising pretty drastically. But what's interesting is that the central banks around the world have been very clear that they view the spike in inflation as transitory. They don't see it as a permanent sort of return to those 3%, 4% inflation rates. They see it as transitory. Now, why they're seeing that is if we break down the components of inflation into those items that are sensitive to COVID and those that are insensitive to COVID, the red line there shows you the components, things like fuel. People weren't traveling. So if we compare the price of gas, for example, last year 60 cents, now we're basically double that, that number is going to look very high. But if we strip out those sort of outliers that we would expect to level off, the core inflation rate is still right around that bank's, the central bank's target of 2%. So you're going to see some shocking numbers, but taken with a grain of salt, we can, by breaking down the components, we can sort of confidently say that this is transitory. Now, one thing that we want to keep you aware of, this has been a topic that's come up with a number of municipalities over the years, is wage inflation. So we can pick on the restaurant industry, for example. The left there shows you in the US, when restaurants reopened, here's what happened. So massive spike in restaurant sales. This would apply to all of the hospitality industry as well. But as things reopened, that large port of cash started to get unleashed and we saw restaurant sales spike materially above the, you know, the long-term trend. Now, what came along with that hand in hand, as you would expect, is the average hourly wages for that sector, leisure and hospitality, actually rose above pre-pandemic trend. So something to watch out for, as the labor market tightens, you would expect to have to pay people more to come and work for you versus somewhere else. So definitely something to keep an eye on going forward. What's going to be sort of an offset to that, so that was the sort of demand side of employment. If we look at the supply side, the basic story here is that all of this fiscal stimulus, this income support in the developed nations, has actually disincentivized people from working. This shows you the contribution of that fiscal stimulus to GDP. You can see in Canada is around 9%. The US closer to 10%. If we break out wage subsidies, things like SERB, income support and those US stimulus checks, really didn't give you much incentive to go out and find a job. So the theory here is that as that fiscal stimulus is pulled back, people will have more incentive to re-enter the workforce, you'll have more supply of labor, which should help dampen that wage inflation. If you take anything from this presentation, it's probably this slide here, is that Alberta should see the biggest economic overshoot versus what the provincial government had forecast two years ago. So the gray bars there show you what the province had forecasted for overall growth over the two-year period from the start of the pandemic till 2022, was a total growth of around 2%. Fast forward till today, our economists forecast a total growth rate more than 10% higher than that, of around 13% total growth. So if you look at all the provinces here in terms of what was forecast by the provincial government versus what should actually happen, Alberta will have the biggest upside surprise of any province over the next two years. Another positive is that our sort of non-retail accommodation, restaurants, stuff like that, if we strip out those industries, our employment's actually back to pre-pandemic levels. Alberta is the second one on that graph there. The red bar is retail accommodation, restaurants, things like that. And the gray bar is all of their employment. And Alberta, you can see there's no gray bar because there's been basically no change to most employment sectors since the start of the pandemic. So we still have relatively robust employment. As the services sector starts to reopen, that should lead the second wave of this recovery. And then the last positive in terms of jobs, vacancy rates are actually, you know, surprisingly above the pre-pandemic trend. So corporations are hiring, there's jobs available, which again, sort of leads into that story of potential wage inflation. If companies are looking for employees, they're all competing for those, for that labor force, you may have to pay people more to come and work at your municipality, for example. So, but it is overall positive that we have jobs available for people who are looking for work. I'm going to turn it over to chart to walk through commodities.
So I know in the past, I've, I know I'm kind of an internal optimist on a lot of commodity prices. And I know the last time I did a forecast, I was kind of talking about the COVID being the catalyst to a demand resurgence for specifically oil and gas. Well, I'm very happy to report that reality has finally met expectations and specifically in terms of oil and gas within this province. Well, James is talking about it, budget expectations versus reality. That's what you kind of see on the left-hand side chart there. What the projected deficit would be in the three major provinces that would be affected by the commodities and the potential improvements due to the oil prices. So you can see that is going to have a material impact to, on the budgets as a percentage of GDP. It's going to have a larger impact. And from a budgetary perspective in Alberta, we're actually seeing our province lighten up on the fiscal restraint. On the right-hand side, what you're looking at is the forecasted budgeted spending in 2019 versus the gray line at the top there with what we actually had happened. Obviously, in the early, basically all through 2020, we saw spending go through the roof. We needed that fiscal support. That's no surprise there. However, the line to watch is, as we kind of stable off going into 2022 and beyond, we can see that there's actually a material 4% increase to spending levels. So there is a lightening up on fiscal restraint. We say slightly, it's not as material as we want, but it's going to have a good positive impact for this province. The province's spending, oil prices actually moving materially higher. Today, it's around, let's call it about $74. Now, the long-term forecast for oil is a good one. It's a good story here. Borrowing a couple of things, we see OPEC and all these other guys unable to come to any type of decision these days. However, if the trend and the momentum continues to move in the direction that it is, so being an economist, you've got to hold a lot of things constant. So I'll say, holding a lot of things constant, if the current conditions continue to kind of forecast, we're sitting at $74. If we can cross that 77 threshold, you're going to look around the mid-80s is where we're looking for the next mark for crude oil, again, barring a lot of expectations for crude oil. I don't like to just talk about the price of oil. One thing that's more important for us, specifically in Alberta, is the price of Canadian oil, so Canadian differentials. We got heavy oil, which is WCS, sweet oil, things like that. Another positive story for this province, we have, I'm going to put a caveat here, the Enbridge Line 3 is being developed. I'm long done trying to predict whether pipelines are going to move forward in this province or at all. However, the Enbridge Line 3 is starting to be built. And with that capacity that's going to be going on, well, all that does is increase the amount of egress that we got coming out of this province, which tightens the differentials of our Canadian crude and makes it more in line with the price of oil that we see on the screen of $74, $75. So another positive impact story for our province as well. Happy to report. Now, this kind of shows you the summary of everything that James and me are talking about. Canada in 2021 is expected to grow at about 5.7% in terms of real GDP and then 4.3%. The best news story here is that Alberta is going to materially lead every, all the other provinces, 7.9% and then 5.3%. seven point nine percent and then five point three percent going forward there. So this kind of shows you that everything that we've been saying in terms of COVID being that catalyst for this province and anybody that's been commodity based and going to this commodity super cycle that everybody's been speaking about, is actually starting to material, uh, materialize in terms of economic recovery. So very good news story for Alberta going forward. And the commodity price doesn't just stop at the province, it's kind of any economy that's had a commodity-based economy. Well, specifically in Canada, our commodity price surge has supported our economy and our Canadian dollar. You can see that compared to countries that don't have commodity-based recoveries, those that do have had a significantly better, uh, lower hit from COVID as the other guys. So for the first time in a long time, us being crude basis played in our favor, us being commodity basis played in our favor, which we haven't been able to say in a very long time. So being commodity based and not being as diversified as people wanted has actually led to a stronger recovery within the country, within US, Australia, compared to guys like UK and Germany. Now, it's a, two, there's always two sides of the coin here. Commodity super cycles are great for provinces, they're great for Canada, but they don't last long. Commodity super cycles don't, they don't go up and then stay there forever. What this is showing you is a two-year change in Bank of Canada's commodity price index. You can see that when crew prices rally, when commodity prices rally, they don't stay there forever. And that's, that's known, this isn't to show you a negative thing, it's just I always gave you that little bit of a grain of salt that yes, oil prices will move higher, but it's, it's a, it's not, it's a cyclical cycle that doesn't kind of last forever. The one thing I will say about this recovery compared to all the other ones is this was a supply-side collapse, that's what caused this recession, we all need to remember that. And what that essentially did was force all of the oil and gas companies to become really efficient with their balance sheets. Costs were cut, spending was cut. We saw actual M and A activity, we see companies buying other companies, we see efficiencies driving throughout the provinces, driving throughout all the companies as well. So what that means is we have a lot more stronger foundation, it's a, a long more strong, stronger foundation and footing for when that commodity super cycle ends. So the very positive news story for us as well going forward. Now, shifting gears here, in terms of talking about interest rates, in terms of Canada, we get a lot of questions, when is the Bank of Canada going to hike? And why? The easiest measure you guys can look at is watching the US. Like James said, they're six months ahead of us. The Bank of Canada will not raise interest rates until the US raises interest rates. The reason why is, we all remember back when the Bank of Canada hiked interest rates before the US dollar, uh, before the US did. And then we remember, and what essentially happened there is, we watched the Canadian dollar go to par. We all remember that. And then there were, it was basically like a whoopsie from the Bank of Canada and they pulled it back. Why they want to keep the interest rates lower and hike, not hike for the Canadian dollar is because when we hike interest rates before the US, it leads to strong Canadian dollar. Strong Canadian dollar hurts our US export, our export economy, which is a material impact to our GDP. So you're going to want to watch to that Canadian dollar to be about below a hundred, a dollar thirty. So that's kind of where the forecast is, Canadian dollar is very boring, it trades in that range. But right now, it's a little bit stronger than they want, but we won't be raising interest rates until the US does. And I think their forecast, correct me if I'm wrong, James, is probably about early to mid next years when they're looking to probably raise their interest rates.
Yeah, sort of Q two, Q three would be the expectation.
Yeah, yeah, and then we will be a little bit shortly after that pending our recovery as well. So one to watch, we can't go too early because we just don't want the Canadian dollar to get too strong, which will just further hurt our economy in terms of exports. The other good news story here is, well, interest rates are low, but is it working? Is monetary policy working by keeping interest rates low? Short answer is yes. We not, if we look pre pandemic and we actually trace back the effective interest rate on household debt. So the actual interest rate we all care about, mortgage rates, all these things, like the actual interest rate we're actually paying on our debt, it's been materially moving lower over the last two decades, you can kind of see on the left-hand side of that chart there. And on the right-hand side of that chart is the impact for every one percent change in the effective interest rate on consumer spending. So you can kind of see that every time the interest rate goes lower, we have more money, it makes sense, we're spending less on debt. We use that cash flow to spend more into the economy. Very awesome, very, very well correlated. So yes, Canadian monetary policy is working. And this chart, these two charts here are why the Bank of Canada is going to be very cautious going forward before they raise interest rates. Because another way to read this chart is, every quarter point hike they do is going to be a quarter point hike, a quarter point effect on the amount of consumer spending. So it's going to, they're going to want to make sure that they're very cautious before they raise interest rates because they don't want to basically over like kill the economy before it's had a chance to essentially grow and foster. So they're watching this chart just like everybody else is to make sure that they're raising interest rates at the right time, not just with the US as well. And this chart here just shows you core PCG, just another way, fancy way of saying inflation. James touched on it a little bit. All this is essentially showing you is that World Central Bank inflation targets are on target. Every World Central Bank's interest rate target is around, inflation target is about two percent. And that's where it's kind of, uh, kind of sitting if we strip out the seasonality of year-over-year change from the, the COVID pandemic, interest rates are right around target. The other kind of key piece here is the chart on the right, is this shows you the number of unemployed people that are available for every job opening. You can kind of see, it's kind of obvious after 2008, the Great Recession, we had a, a material uptick in job capacity is another way to look at it. And then come, coming into all through 2020, we had a material impact as well. Last year was a lot worse than anybody had forecast in terms of job capacity. And the reason being is, if we actually adjust this number for what's called the misclassification of the labor force and misclassification labor force, what essentially means is, what goes into unemployment data is, if you stop looking for a job, you're no longer part of the unemployment rate. So we actually pull those people back into the, uh, into the calculation, which is important because a lot of people stopped looking for jobs because they're getting stimulus, as James touched on. The capacity was significantly worse. So the real number was significantly worse than 2008. Now, pause news, news story is, we are hiring, we see vacancy rates going higher. So the shock was temporary, it didn't, it didn't last as long as the 2008 one did. It was a very much a V shape, a very short-term spike in terms of the, a number of unemployed people per job opening. So very good news story, very temporary. There was a known ending under, unlike 2008, where it was a fundamental shift that everybody was trying to get adjusted to. And then last thing is, timing is everything. When were we going to see bigger gains in employment? And just touching on what James said, well, we got fiscal stimulus kind of disincentivizing people to work. And when are they going to start cutting back more and more and more on stimulus? It's less so about a proportion of population. The government is watching these numbers very carefully, they see these data and they see it just like as, as all the economists do out there. They're looking at declining the unemployment benefits as a proportion of the labor force. So that adjusted number that we're talking about. So they're going to keep it in line and keep adjusting fiscal stimulus back as that labor force capacity starts to increase as well. So look to see that stimulus start to kind of roll back. But again, just like interest rates, they don't want to do an all or nothing approach. It's going to be a very calculated and measured approach going forward. And then just kind of putting it all together, what to expect from the next wave of the recovery? So the recovery will be fuller and faster than those seen from previous recessions. It was transitory, we knew there was going to be an end, we just didn't know when. The service sectors and, and that was because it was a service sector recession essentially. We didn't have brick and mortar shutting down where it takes a long time to get debt to rebuild the manufacturing industry. It was very much a service sector industry, you can just hire people to kind of get people back to work. And households have had plenty of disposable income saved and ready to spend. We've seen cash build up, so a lot of dry powder sitting on the side for when that recovery finally essentially happened. And the swift return in demand is causing inflationary pressures in the US. We can, which could also be seen in Canada, albeit to a lesser degree, the more material inflation number to watch would be in wage inflation because that's going to have a more material impact on all of us, specifically when we're looking to do those hiring as well. And then from an interest rate perspective, I just touched on it, the Bank of Canada is going to wait for the US to kind of hike interest rates. The one key piece here that I want to touch on is that second bullet point in there, longer-term interest rates see another leg higher, may see another leg higher as underlying inflationary pressure rises. So if we see inflation continue to rise, long-term interest rates are going to start to materially pick up. When we say long-term interest rates, we're talking about 20-year interest rates. So from your guys' investment portfolio perspective, you guys are fairly insulated, we have a very short-term portfolio, so we're less concerned about long-term inflationary pressure. So if we were, if I were to pull up the yield curve right now, it'd be very steep between now and 10 years. So the bank, so the, the market is essentially baked in a lot of inflationary pressures on the short term. But then it becomes very flat after that. And so what a flat yield curve from 10 years and beyond means is that if inflationary pressures rise, and they will, and specifically in terms of wage inflation, that back half of the yield curve is going to start to get picked up. Now, where this is important for you guys is if you have long-term capital projects, long-term, if you have long-term debt needs, now's the time to lock them in because you're going to see those interest rates start to move materially higher going forward. So that's where you guys can kind of look at what we're saying, kind of apply it to maybe in terms of debt capacity and debt capital needs for you guys and for Parkland County as a whole. And then the last one is just very slight variance in the need for boost shots are still a concern for tourism and transit use and potential swift return to offices. This is kind of a unknown right now, we don't know what that back-to-work is model is going to look like, some coming out saying a hybrid model, some are saying all at work, some are saying all at home, it's going to be very much a trial and error kind of situation going forward, no one's got the right answers, that's going to be one to watch. And then variance, you've heard the word variance of concern, I mean, it is what it is. This is a, this pandemic is going to go from a pandemic to an endemic. It's going to be with us for a while, but we're going to start to understand it better. Vaccines are going to start to work better and we're, we're going to get more effective vaccines essentially going forward. So that last bullet's less of a concern, but with that, I kind of want to push it over to you guys for questions as well.
Okay, um, great, thank you very much. I, I have to say that I know that the council and staff, we do look forward to your annual appointment with the council and we appreciate the insight and that you do target the real issues, the timely issues that we're looking at, and you've covered those well today. And there may be other questions from council. I will start with the mayor, Mr. Mayor, if you want to open up, if you have any questions, and I'll move to each councillor, just speak in order of your division, please.
Thank you, I appreciate the presentation as always. I'm just wondering if you could expand a bit more, touch on the difference in the provincial forecast and the CIBC forecast and the recovery. You know, the change between 2029 to 2022, I find very interesting. You know, he's certainly a big part of that is the increase in price of oil. But in looking at the historic prices in Alberta, the highest price we had prior to about a month ago, and we hit like a buck thirty-two at some gas stations. When I looked, it was about a buck twenty-nine and that was back in 2008. And the price per barrel peaked at about just over a buck, a hundred and thirty dollars US per barrel. It's now at seventy-four and we're paying, like I said, last week we're paying, or a couple of weeks ago, we're paying a buck thirty-one, I believe it was. So there's a huge discrepancy. And I'm not saying there's any collusion amongst the oil companies, but that puts a lot of strain on other, other industries and sectors when you have, particularly in the transportation logistics. So just if you can touch a little bit more on that, and as you did say, also these, these are short-lived cycles. So if you can just touch on that a bit more, please, thanks.
Yeah, it's a great question, Mayor. And the easiest response would be for the provincial forecast was the budget. I don't want to say under-promise, over-deliver in terms of a budget. However, nobody forecasted like COVID, what essentially did, I believe in the budget, they had like, let's call it about a sixty-five dollar mark for where they thought the long-term prices of oil were going to be, which was a great forecast at that time. No one thought that COVID was going to come through and then create this catalyst for this commodity super cycle in terms of increasing demand and cutting out a significant amount of crude supply going forward. So that fundamental change that COVID created in the terms of the commodity markets is would be what that biggest overshoot from our forecast would be to the 2019 budget. So if we were to take the budget, if they were to do an updated budget as of today, that obviously that change would be a lot less because it was pre-COVID, right? So it's, it's a little bit apples to oranges because they were going, they didn't know that COVID was going to create this commodity super cycle. So that speaks to a little bit of the overshoot. Now, you're absolutely right, hundred and thirty-dollar oil, we saw a hundred and twenty, a dollar twenty-nine gas. Now, seventy-five-dollar oil, we're seeing them in same, same gas prices, there's not as much correlation. I would less say this is, it's obviously a disconnect, but the gas price increase is more as a result of the transitory inflation that we're talking about. Versus, we saw gas at sixty cents last year because everybody was stuck in their house. Well, now that all the economies are reopening, you see in these differentials and, and in, in terms of refining, refinery differentials materially adjust for the short term. It is a short-term discrepancy that won't persist, just like all the other inflationary pressures you see. That's what's caused the disconnect. The unfortunate reality is COVID has caused a lot of disconnects in the market, it's really hard to forecast anything. However, I'll say that dollar twenty-nine, dollar thirty oil that we're, sorry, gas that we're seeing right now is more of a disconnect in terms of short-term inflationary pressures because the province is essentially open, we're allowed to travel again. With the mask mandates are going, like differentials are adjusting, the market is smart, so that's what it's adjusting for right now. So I would, I would less focus on a fundamental shift and just go, this is a temporary shift. And the next time we do an update, you can very much question me on again if it becomes temporary. But I would be very shocked to see if this is not, it doesn't kind of come back down after the summer demand driving season essentially.
Just to add to that chart, Mr. Mayor, so another, another component that goes into that, it's, it's not just about the price of commodities, right? When that forecast would have been done, they would not have taken into account the tremendous level of monetary and fiscal stimulus that was dolled out throughout COVID, right? Like they would not have foreseen interest rates being cut to near zero. They would not have foreseen Canada doling out more fiscal stimulus than any other G7 nation in the world. So they would not have foreseen that massive buildup in cash that's now being set to unleash on the economy. So if you notice on that graph, almost, I think it's, it's, it's every single province. Now, the, the, the forecast now is materially higher than what the province's forecast. So it applies for all provinces, it's just in Alberta, we have that, you know, sort of sweetener that we also have that impact of commodities.
Councillor Johnson, any questions or comments?
No, thank you, just appreciate the update, it's always so informative, thanks.
I know, no questions for me, thanks very much for coming in, I really appreciate it.
And Councillor Melnick.
Thank you, just a couple of things, if I may. So with the looming proposed federal election coming up, you know, impact that you guys are anticipating for Alberta, for Canada as a whole? And the second piece is, is what are any upcoming industries that you think will be, we should be watching for in the Alberta market?
James, you want to talk about the feds and then I'll talk a little bit about the industry impact change?
Sure, I think right now there's just a ton of uncertainty. I mean, it, there's, there's a lot of conversations chatting with family and friends about who's going to pay for all this fiscal stimulus that was dulled out? Are we going to see tax hikes? It's going to largely depend on who gets elected, right? It, ultimately, it's going to be the future generations that end up paying for this. Tax increases are highly likely. I think Alberta is going to remain the most competitive province to be in in terms of attracting corporations and attracting, attracting employees, not just from around Canada, but also from the US. We're going to have one of the lowest taxed jurisdictions in North America. So I think that will continue to support our growth story. But Chart and I will always steer clear of trying to forecast politics. So I'm going to kind of dodge that part of the question. Chart, do you want to talk on specific industries?
Yeah, I'm going to piggyback on what James said about the lowest tax rate in North America, specifically for this province. And Parkland County is a fun one, you kind of, you've kind of seen the residual effects of it with the Amazon facility coming in in terms of the first in, in the province. That is part of a larger fundamental change and it's kind of a silent one that's no one's really talking about. It's the tech sector that's been booming in Alberta, right? The, it's, it's hard to forecast because there's a lot of its private, we don't see a lot of data on it. But the tech sector is here and it's starting to have a material impact to this province. Now, it's still in the early phase, so it's hard for us to do a forecast, but it's definitely one to watch going forward. We've seen here in Calgary, we've seen a material impact and upshift in terms of tech companies coming here. I don't know what amount of that is from the tax rates being low, right? Ever, it's got to be, it's got to move the needle somewhat, right? But that's one, I would say the tech sector is probably the easiest one to watch and kind of going forward. And it's great when Parkland County is already kind of early adopter, going to get the benefits of it where, from the residual from the Amazon facility as well, but that's the biggest one for us in this province.
If I may, so what about in the agricultural industry? You know, so many, so much of Parkland County is, is of a rural component. Yes, that would be a one in, but what about in the agriculture and tourism industry, any, anything you would like to share with that?
Well, the, the egg is going to piggyback, I, I use the word commodity super cycle to kind of blanket over in my presentations. That, that includes all commodities, the agriculture is going to be one that's going to benefit materially from that as well as the supply chains try and adjust going forward. Not going to be as materially impacted as, uh, like in terms of oil and the other commodities, but egg's going to have that positive benefit for the exact same reasons that COVID was the catalyst for everybody else and causing supply chain disruptions. And for the second part, the second part of the question, sorry, it was.
Tourism, I believe.
Tourism.
Yeah, so t- tourism is one, it's the, it's been the lagging uh, recovery, right? We've it's there's there's been two lagging recoveries, obviously, commercial real estate and tourism, right? We like to say the phrase, everybody's dying to go on a vacation, but we're not willing to die to go on a vacation. Right? So as we've all kind of seen, these economies kind of reopen up. We've now seen mass mandates come off. We've seen a vaccine effective rates go, come off. You're going to see people start to get a little bit more comfortable, get more out there, and the tourism is going to get uh, a more positive impact going forward. It's just, it's not going to be that V-shaped recovery as everything else is, because it's going to be more driven around people's uncertainties and people's comfort levels, which is going to have a slower kind of uptick going forward. But tourism will get there. It's not going to be as fast as everything else, though.
But just to add to that, I think second half of this year is when you'll see sort of that demand to pick up. You'll see interprovincial travel pick up and those travelers have money to spend. So certainly, um, there's a, there's a tailwind behind tourism.
And that's your madam chair.
Yes, thank you. Um, just uh, I'm just in closing, I appreciate we do have another appointment coming up. Uh, there was a mention of future generations having to pay for the costs that we've incurred. Just in some reading, I saw province of Alberta, Minister James putting his report out over five billion dollars loan just spent in the province of Alberta. Uh, so some that's going to have to be paid for somewhere, maybe the cost of oil, the barrel of oil is going to pick up some without obviously, but it comes in, but uh, somebody's going to be paying for that, but on a federal level, it's, you know, I I don't have the figures there. I'm, it's enormous. Um, one other that I didn't hear in your presentation today, um, you know, I've been reading about the impact of outside uh, players in the uh, energy sector and the oil-producing sector. As an example, some of the demands that are coming out of the United Arab uh, uh, United Arab Emirates air United Arab Emirates, talking about their demands on the economy. Do you, how how do you see that impacting what's happening in Canada?
So that Yeah, so the UAE uh, is a, is a funny one to watch. So they're they're kind of uh, in a battle with OPEC, and that's why OPEC refuses come to a decision right now. So that's why I said, we're sitting at seventy four, barring OPEC actually coming to an agreement of some sorts, that's when you'll see the next kind of fundamental shift higher for accrued. It's very much depends on what the UAE does. Uh, it's very hard to predict what that uh, what the OPEC is going to do in terms of whether they're going to cut or whatnot. However, I will say that the one kind of unified factor for OPEC was causing an actual fundamental supply disruption to US shale, which was accomplished. Right? I will say that that was absolutely accomplished. And so they're going to have a positive impact. One thing OPEC doesn't want to see is hundred dollar oil, forty dollar oil, a hundred they want to see a very slow gradual kind of fundamental shift up in oil, which is what we kind of see. You, if you talk about, they're happy with sixty five to seventy five dollar oil. Right? So that's where OPEC is generally pretty happy. However, higher oil prices is great for everybody else, as long as it's a fundamental sta- stable uh, price going forward. They don't like to sit in these commodity supercycles that we're all kind of talking about. So it's it's very cautious, optimistic approach. It's hard for me to give you a straight answer on that one, unfortunately. And then uh, James, you want to touch on the second half there?
Sorry, what was the second half? I focused on the UAE there.
No, that that was it. You know, I'm just wondering about that impact, you know, on a world, on a world basis. And I think you've covered it in your comments there.
Oh, and sorry, I think the other one was uh,
Boring.
Yeah, the the, so for Alberta borrowing and more so like any federal borrowing, you're right, it's a lot of debt. Uh, economists, our team, we don't necessarily, we have a little bit of a dear from you. We don't view debt necessarily as a bad thing in terms of a bill that needs to be spent. If this were a corporation and they were taking debt, you go, what kind of return are we getting for that debt? Well, we are seeing some type of return in terms of GDP. It's just debt capacity is always a relative measure you want to watch. How much debt capacity do you have? Is it going to make a material impact and change? The reality is Canada had a significant debt capacity compared to our G seven partners going into this pandemic. So we had a lot of room to spend and we did get a good amount of benefit. So yes, it sucks to have this much debt, but we did get a good return on investment, if another way to think about it.
Yeah. Okay, um, uh, thank you very much. Uh, we always appreciate the Hobson, Shaheil Advisory Group bringing us up-to-date information on economic situation. So uh, thank you for your time. Information, the discussion that you put today. Uh, enjoy your day and I will ask for a motion to accept your presentation as information.
Madam Chair, it's councillor Emily Sujensen, Division One, and I'll make the motion that the economic update you received for information is presented.
Thank you. That motion is on the floor. Any opposition to the motion? Say no. Thank you very much. I appreciate your presentation today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bye-bye. Have a good day. We're just a little bit behind on our schedule here. We'll move to five point three. Um, we have the Hamlet Reinvestment Strategy Update. Uh, Ms. Wayne, if you'd like to introduce that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to invite Krista Cannell, Manager of Community Sustainability, uh, and Barb Shackel Hardman, Director of Agricultural Agricultural Services, um, along with MNP Consultant Stephen Rogers, uh, to our meeting this morning, and they are here to present the Hamlet Reinvestment Strategy and answer any questions the committee may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Swain. Um, all right, so I am just going to introduce Stephen Rogers. He's our project manager from MNP and he is going to get right into the presentation today. Uh, where we'll, we will be presenting the results of our recent public engagement phone survey. So, uh, Stephen, all yours.
Thank you, Krista. And thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I'm very excited to present the, the information that we'll have for you today in a, in a small slide deck. Krista, do you have the deck handy or should I, should I be calling that up?
I can definitely share my screen for you, Stephen.
Thank you.
Can you see that all right?
Yeah, I can. Can everyone else see it?
Yes, that's available for all of us. Thank you, I believe.
Excellent. So we'll jump right into it. Uh, this is an update. Um, as many of you, I'm sure know, this has been a ongoing initiative for quite some time now. Um, we're excited to bring some results from our recent um, public engagement, which was a phone survey. So we're going to walk through some of the results of that survey and also just give you a general update on, on how that um, that work and those results fit into the broader context of the project. So to date, uh, we've done quite a bit of work on really driving towards an analysis of the various services and service areas in in the county and the and the services that are provided out to the public in the hamlets and in the areas around the hamlets. On the left side of your screen, you see a summary of some of the earlier pieces of work that were undertaken over the course of the last several months. Uh, starting with some initial public engagement that we did last summer, which was more in a qualitative, uh, smaller sample size. And then uh, some also a- analytical pieces where we looked at budgets, we looked at documents that um, Krista and the team had had developed over uh, many months. And we also did some internal interviews across various service areas, all that feeding into an initial sense of um, where some of those key areas of focus would be. And and then uh, from there, going out into the right side of your screen, some additional components of work that we've taken, taken on more recently to dive into those those um, pieces of analysis, including the second round of public engagement. So what we did there um, is all feeding into the initial draft of the Hamlet Reinvestment Strategy. So this graphic is just trying to demonstrate all the inputs to date and where that's taking us in the months to come here. So to recap what we um, what we found from the initial service area analysis, so prior to this uh, most recent round of public engagement, we have a slide here that shows where we landed in terms of those areas of focus. And what this is really trying to tell us is based on things like um, our sense of um, citizen satisfaction, of the visibility of services, of their alignment to your strategic priorities, uh, a number of different other parameters. We landed on eight priority areas in our initial analysis that were earmarked for for further exploration. And that exploration might include more detailed analysis of costs. Detail analysis of the service levels, looking more into the satisfaction levels of those services. And so along with those two, those eight priority areas, we also identified uh, five additional areas that we put into this group C category over here that doesn't mean we want to forget about those, those services. Um, they are important services, but they were potentially less um, finding less value potentially and exploring those further in in terms of either changing them, uh, adjusting them, updating them, exploring them further. So really, this is just a quick summary in one slide of where that initial, all that stuff that was on the left side of this, of the previous slide uh, had us land. And this is what we took into the um, the public engagement we did in May and June as a starting point. And um, what I'll go through now are the results of that public engagement and where those took us in respect to the same questions around service areas that we want to focus on in in more detail. So the the more recent public engagement survey, um, critical to understand, it was quantitative as opposed to qualitative in its approach, which means that we weren't asking open-ended questions, uh, but asking more typical type survey questions you'd hear on a, on a phone survey, you know, on a scale of one to five, please rank your satisfaction with X or please rank your comfort with Y. So this, this phone survey was targeted to residents both in and around the um, the seven hamlets on the screen there. We did make the um, the judgment call to exclude Wobman specifically from, from this, just given the timing of, of the integration of Wobman into the county. So at this stage, really focusing in on those seven areas. Um, the questions we explored were really focused in on, at a high level, on the understanding of county services. We wanted to get a sense of how much citizens actually understand the services that they receive. Do they, do they see them? Do they know these things are being provided by the county? Um, the satisfaction with those services and then also getting into that sense of, okay, now if we are going to make some changes to those services in any way, shape or form, where would you want to see those changes? So really, that's the focus of this uh, this public engagement we went out and did in in May and June. And I should also mention that the, the organization that that led the, the survey for us was Trend Research. So there's a team there at Trend Research that undertook these interviews over a course of um, a couple of weeks in late May. And early June. And uh, this is just a summary again of the engagement survey. So to refresh, last summer, um, late spring, early summer, we did those twenty in-depth telephone interviews with residents and businesses in the hamlets. So that fed into that initial analysis that you saw earlier. And here, when we went out to do this analysis in that quantitative sense, uh, much broader sample, thirty five thousand calls almost um, were were made with, with a hundred and twenty seven of those resulting in completed surveys. This is a random sample and again emphasizing as residents both in and around the hamlets. So what the little pie graph on the, on the right side of the screen shows is the distribution of those hundred and twenty seven completed surveys. So interestingly, um, we've got a very high number of participants who completed the survey who lived in and around Carvel, uh, which is one of the smaller hamlets. And fewer than maybe we'd expected from in and around the Ant Whistle area where we only received eight. So something to think about, it doesn't um, it doesn't, in my mind, diminish the, the value of these results. It's just something for us to think about as we move into the subsequent phases of this this project and subsequent pieces of public engagement, um, where we may want to consider getting a little bit more focused in on on gathering some insights from in and around uh, Ant Whistle. And of course, we'll also have to figure out what engagement is going to look like with with Wobman and the significant population there. So I'm going to walk through a few slides now that have a summary of of the findings themselves. We can, uh, we can come back to any specific questions you may have around any of these results once, once I'm through the slides. But really, you know, at a high level, we started out with a, a question around economic outlook. I I heard the tail end of the the previous um, presentation. So uh, in 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 respect to that, uh, very high level, what we saw here was that in in Parkland County, thirteen percent of the respondents indicated that they thought the local economy was improving, while thirty seven percent saw it getting worse. Uh, and then there's a, a large number of, of respondents who kind of put it in the neither getting worse or improving category. What our friends from Trend did here is they also put in a state of the Alberta economy. Similar question asked more broadly across, across the province. And um, at the time in December twenty twenty, this might be interesting, just in the context of how things have progressed over the last few months with, with the pandemic and um, people's outlook. There was a very small percentage of people who felt the economy was improving at the provincial level. Um, and many, many more who thought it was actually getting worse. Since then, uh, it's not reflected in the slide. We just didn't have time to get it in. There was very recent trend provided us with an update from June twenty twenty. And I can tell you that in that um, in that province-wide survey, twenty six percent of respondents indicated they thought the economy was improving. So significant change from uh, December twenty twenty, whereas um, only forty percent saw it getting worse. So we're seeing a shift at the provincial level anyways, in terms of that economic outlook. What the factors are that might be driving that, I don't know off the, off the top of my head. Um, and I'm not sure how in-depth those questions got, but at least at that high level, you know, across the board, it gives you some sense of how, how Parkland County's outlook from these respondents, from this survey in particular, around the hamlets compare against the more um, the broader provincial outlook. Then we got into some specific questions around community values and quality of life. You can see the results here. Um, interestingly, starting off with the, the ones where we got the strongest agreement that my computer, my community is a safe place to live and work. Uh, two thirds of respondents agreed with that, either um, that I agree or agree strongly to that statement. Whereas only twelve percent actively disagreed with it. Uh, that it's an appealing place to live for both young people and young families, more than half agreed with that statement. That there's a strong connection to the community, again, over half in and around half saying that my community is vibrant and strong. And we saw the, the weakest agreement was around that last statement on the screen here, that the county appropriately invest and supports my community. Only a third there um, approximately responded strongly that they, they agree. Into the services themselves, we asked at a, at a high level around um, around three buckets of services before getting into more specific services. Asking first about business, that business activity and economic development. Again, more than half indicated that they would like to see more um, activity and economic development in the community. And likewise, similarly, on the question around community and social services, more than half indicated they wanted to see more. On the um, culture and tourism side, though, less than half indicated that they wanted to see more there. And part of this might be part of what we're seeing here, the spread here, the, the relatively even spread, which may seem a bit um, interesting. This is a bit of speculation. It's not something we asked specifically in the survey. But there are people who live in the hamlets and in and around those hamlets in in smaller communities who, who do see a certain lifestyle there um, as appealing. So it's quieter, it's smaller, they're not living in a, in a bigger urban center. And so I think that, that attitude may be partially reflected in here. Again, that's my speculation, but that's just something to consider. Over on the right side, a question around the overall services and the satisfaction level there. Between extremely satisfied and satisfied, we have almost um, forty percent of the respondents in in that area, uh, thirty five percent in the, in the neutral and about twenty eight in the not satisfied side of things. Let's go to the next one, Krista. Thank you. Then we asked about specific services. So again, this is on that scale of one to five. Can you rank services in terms of how satisfied are you with the services today that the county is providing? And this, this graphic starts at the top with the ones that were um, ranked highest and all the way to the bottom where they were ranked the lowest. At times, it's that neutral in the middle that's pushing things uh, a little bit. But um, we also need to look at the dissatisfied numbers. So when you look at services like road condition and maintenance, I don't think there'd be any surprise there. From this audience, you know, there are significant number of respondents who are dissatisfied with that service. Um, economic development, forty three percent there, that may be a reflection of just the broader economic times and and that earlier conversation we just had about economic outlook. So um, there, there's good information in here. It helps us when we look at there, there's good information in here. It helps us when we look at the the overall focus areas where we want to take the, the direction of the Hamlet reinvestment strategy and where we want to focus further analysis. Interestingly, it doesn't give us the same eight services that we'd identified in the earlier work in that earlier slide that, that I put up there. There are some places where there's, there's some differences. And so that's, that's important for, for us and Krista and the team to, to dig into a little bit more and find out why that, that might be. Has something changed? Has something shifted from the analysis and the public engagement we did earlier to today? Or is this just more information that tells us these are complicated topics and, and complicated items that we need to unpack in more detail? What we did next, well, what Trend did next for us was a correlation exercise. So what you'll see on the next slide is a plotting of the various services that you, you just saw on the previous slide, all those different services. We asked how satisfied citizens are. And it's, it's looking at those services in the context of if we were to change this service, if we were, if we were to improve this service, what would the impact of that improvement potentially be on the overall satisfaction that the citizens have with county services? So there's four general categories where the services ended up being plotted in this correlation exercise in the top right, there's maintain your strength. So that means citizens are already seeing strength in that service. They're already happy with that service. It's visible. So make sure you continue to, to offer that high quality service. On the top left, there's leverage. What that means is that generally speaking, the service is strong, but they need to be better connected to the overall reputation. So there may be a visibility issue there. It may be something that's not as obvious to the average citizen that the county is investing in and providing high quality service in. There's, there's in the bottom left analyze further. These are services where there's definitely availability for improvement. But that improvement may not actually sway the overall satisfaction of the citizens as much as the ones in the bottom right, where we're really going to end up focusing based on, on, on these findings would be to stay, these are services where there's room to improve and they will increase the the overall satisfaction of the citizens if those improvements were to be made. And I'm saying improvements in the broadest sense possible too, because that could mean many things. That could be, you know, further, further dollars invested. It could be more engagement and, and building out that understanding. It could be tying those services together in a more unified way so that there's, there's more coordination and, and efficiency. So keeping that in mind that that, that term improved can be pretty open-ended at this stage. Here is the plotting of those services based on this survey and these findings. We had quite a few that ended up in that improve category. So you've got your water services, rec facility, sidewalks, roadside drainage, road maintenance itself, wastewater. No great surprises in there, except based on our earlier work and the earlier surveys, we didn't get the sense that some of those more infrastructure-based services were as important to citizens or would have as big an impact on their overall satisfaction. So in that, by that, I mean things like your, your water services and your wastewater. Not surprised by some of the others like rec facilities, road maintenance, sidewalks, those kind of pieces. You know, quite visible and, and typical areas where, you know, you get citizen comment on one way or the other. In that analyze further category, you know, some of the items like parks and economic development, I think we certainly have to, to look into those in more detail. Internet access surprised us a little bit. I think both, both Chris and I, we went through that. We thought that would be something that citizens would be maybe a little bit more inclined to see tied to satisfaction. But in this, in this sense, it doesn't appear to be, based on this analysis anyways, as, as prominent as we thought it might be. And then over in the leverage and where, you know, where, where, where things are going well on the maintain and lever side, the top half of the screen, you've got your fire and rescue, your peace officers strongly there. Generally, one of those services, both those kinds of services are ones that you need when you need them, but otherwise they tend to be a little bit less visible. So that might be why they're, you know, the awareness around the services a little bit lower. And then snow removal, land use planning, tourism all appearing in that, in that top right quadrant of the maintain side. So those are, those are good pieces there as well. I think land use and planning will take some unpacking. It's such a broad topic and, and so many pieces tie into that in terms of all the services that are offered. We'll have to make sure we're understanding that one fully as well. And this takes us into our progress to date and next steps. We'll go through these fairly quickly and then open it up to, to some questions. This is just a timeline that shows where we've been and where we're heading. Keeping in mind for those who maybe don't have a top of mind that the intent with this project has always been for it to be multi-year. And we've, we've moved through that first year and, and a bit with all the disruptions from COVID and still ended up in a, in a pretty good spot where we've gone through and done that broad public engagement that we, we set out to do. Pair that with some of that service analysis along the way, but we are going to go out in the upcoming months and, and years and do more targeted public engagement. So back to that, that pie graph that showed, you know, where the respondents lived for this survey, you know, getting out into the communities where we really want to focus in on targeted opportunities, target initiatives. That's, that's the upcoming effort there in terms of public engagement. And in terms of developing the Hamlet reinvestment strategy itself, that, that work is underway. That work has started. And we need to incorporate the results of this public engagement into that work. So some difference between where we, where we landed in that initial service area analysis and what we've now found from this public engagement means that there's some work to be done there. I don't think it fundamentally changes our approach to, to developing the strategy. It just means it might take a little bit more work in developing out some of those specific initiatives, whether we're talking about immediate initiatives or, or longer-term items. So that might mean going back to the drawing board and some of the service areas in terms of just refreshing the analysis on those services, understanding their, their different components and the costs and all those pieces. And then finally, it'll be like I just mentioned on the previous slide, going on designing those next pieces of public engagement. Don't necessarily expect any of those to be happening in the, in the shorter term. That's probably a little bit further, further off, given that there'll be lots, lots going on in the fall already. So I think that's all the slides we have. So maybe unless Krista has any other sort of comments in, in, in overview summary, we, we can open it up to, to questions.
Yeah, thanks, Stephen. I was just going to add a, a couple of points on through the, the information that we heard from the communities. So in terms of hearing from car, quite a few people around the Carville region. So people were asked what hamlet they lived in or closest to. So they, they essentially had to self-identify with a hamlet. So what we're seeing there is quite a few people self-identifying with the Carville region, even if they don't live directly in the hamlet. It could also be because most people, it is the farthest east hamlet. So, and there are quite a few subdivision developments around that area. Low numbers in Ant Whistle. We've speculated that perhaps people weren't willing to participate in the phone survey there. Just because the, the broad catch of, of phone numbers should have caught more participants statistically from that area. And then in terms of the the correlation internet access with the overall satisfaction, also speculated it could be in terms of people's expectations for internet access and the rural areas are, are fairly low. And perhaps they've had a, a positive experience with, you know, our planning development area or department in the county and, and something like that makes, leaves them with a higher sense of satisfaction in the short term. And then one, one other point I was going to make was just that we do still have a, a survey open on our website and we'll be sending out some broad communications to the community at large to let them know that they have that opportunity for input into this strategy. And part of that survey is also request or asking the question of would they support further further investment or reinvestment in, in hamlets as well. So we're hoping to, to engage more of the community at large by that mechanism, as well as do some a little bit more specific outreach to the Ant Whistle area to see if we can get some more participation from that, that community. But with that, yeah, definitely we can open up for any questions or comments or the committee might have.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I'll ask for a motion to put the presentation on the floor. And if I could have that motion, please.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair, Counselor John McLeod, Division Five. Happy to bring forward the motion that the Hamlet reinvestment strategy update you receive for information as presented. And if I could ask a question.
Go ahead, yes.
Yeah, I have a question. Thanks. Thanks, Christian and Stefan for bringing this forward. I found it quite interesting and of course, statistics are what they are and they take them with a grain of salt. So my question is about that neutral perspective. When I'm looking at the, the graph, the, and all the charts, you, you take neutral as a positive or a negative. And you probably shouldn't take it as either, but you know, how does the industry look? And you know, as you look at the, the charts, you seem extremely satisfied, satisfied and neutral. In general, if you took the neutral as a positive, we're doing pretty good, looking good. And, but what's, what would the industry look at as a neutral perspective?
Honestly, I think it could be just about anything. It's a very open-ended question. So you know, some, I know some surveys that are, that are done, they avoid using that neutral. Instead of doing a scale of one to five, they'll, they'll take it out and do one to four and make people choose one way or the other. The other school of thought is no, you want to give people that ability to, to sit on the fence, stay in the middle. Maybe it indicates even that they're not, not quite sure. They don't know. I mean, we did give them the not sure option, but even then they, they're answering questions quite quickly, moving through it. So my advice would honestly be not to read too much into the neutral. It's, it's, it's there and I agree with you. There's probably people in, within that neutral one, there's leaning a little more to satisfy versus to dissatisfied. It could change on the day, change on the hour. Maybe they haven't had their morning coffee. You know, so I, I wouldn't think about it or, or into it too much. And, and when you look at at least the slide that, that Krista has up around the screen right now, the other numbers in and of themselves are still quite telling. So even not getting into the, into the neutral one, I mean, you just discounted it completely. Those are still quite telling. So I, I take your comment. I don't know that there is an industry way of looking at it. I think it's very survey dependent. And depending on, you know, what you're asking, who you're asking it to and what the general context of that conversation is.
And it perhaps also is, is where they don't feel like that it's very relevant to them or they haven't had to, to deal with the peersality on anything. So you, in that sense, you can say, well, they aren't dissatisfied with us, but so in some of those maybe non-visible services, if, if people are neutral, then it could mean that they're, you know.
Yeah.
We can get through their regular day. They're okay with it.
Yeah, they may not have a benchmark either. That could be a reflection of that as well, right? So you know, you think about it, you know, I, I tend to work with a lot of municipalities and, and you know, I think in general, people who work in municipalities have a sense of what their neighbor does, what their neighbor offers. Citizens may not be the same, so they, they may not really know. And hence, hence so many of them ending up answering neutral. It just may not know, is this a good, am I getting good service here or not?
And Ms. Quinnell, if I could just add, at the Community Sustainability Committee, there was discussion about survey results at the beginning of the process and it was found that there was, Stephen is indicating a lack of understanding of what are offered, what the level is and what services. And there was some discussion about providing some information so that people would have a better information base from which to answer. Possibly Ms. Quinnell, you might like to talk to that or Stephen, please.
Yeah, definitely. To you, Counselor Kavasik. I, we have used our website primarily as the, the landing base for, for information. So we have added additional information about service areas for people to access and understand kind of what we provide and what that means. I like actually that we are seeing less less of that not sure answer in a lot of these service areas. And the fact that we're actually seeing it, it's not just straight across the board, you know, a, a similar percentage of not sure. We do in some areas have a higher percentage of not sure is, is telling me that people are actually considering that as a, as a response and they are saying if they aren't sure. So I think in some of those, those high percentage of not sure areas, you can see their, their non-visible services or services that people might not understand as well. Like water and wastewater, but.
Have like sidewalks, right?
Yeah, air sidewalks, which we are non-existent in a lot of places. So so I, I actually am happy with the percentage of people that have answered not sure. And so hopefully that they potentially took the time to yeah, visit that website and, and understand a little bit better.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Go ahead, Mr. Counselor.
Yeah, what, what is leaning towards in the, in the perspective of the neutral is the demographics between different regions in Parkland County, like you indicated that, you know, Ant Whistle was a little weak on participating, but it, it's all about the question, I guess, and how you frame the question. And there, there's different type of people from one end of the county to the other, you know, you got the surrounding subdivisions and whatnot around Carville. And then you, as you move west, you get a different demographics of people. So it's about tailoring that question. And where I was going with the neutral perspective of it, maybe we need to start thinking about how we tailor those questions for the demographics of the area.
Thank you, Counselor. I think that's a good point. And I mean, certainly some consideration as we go to designing the next rounds of public engagement, which will be more focused
Thank you.
Counselor McLeod, that answers your questions. Great, thank you, Counselor Melnick. You're next.
Thank you. So I guess for myself, I'm a, a little bit discouraged actually by the survey in many senses. I think that I'm not sure if it's, that we are actually addressing the the issue about actually how do we reach out to individuals? Throwing a typical phone survey and say, hey, you know, what do you think? Most people say, I'm not answering surveys. Who the hell are you? But I'm not answering surveys. You know, so I've just been doing a little bit of, you know, quickly as I'm sitting here looking at our Facebook page and, and I don't see anything put on there to say, hey, you know, it's survey coming to you or, or even, hey, we have a survey on our website. Would you like to look into it? They need to, we need to be making sure people have an understanding of why we want the information. You know, what does it mean to you? We don't do a good enough piece ahead of the time. Most people aren't going to answer a survey. The government, I don't need to tell the government anything. So if we don't do a, a, a job ahead of the, ahead of the survey, we're not going to get the participation in my opinion that we need. So a little bit dissatisfied, quite honestly, with, with what I'm seeing. I think quite honestly, for most of what I'm seeing on that report, I would have said counsel probably could have told you those same answers. You know, we're in our areas. We understand what is important to people. And I, I, there was nothing enlightening for me, actually. I'm sorry to be rude about this. There was nothing enlightening to me in what I'm hearing. So I say, I think we need to do a better part about how we articulate to our members, to our residents, that there is an importance as to why you want to answer this survey, not just are you satisfied? You know, we're trying to build the community ahead of time. You know, we're trying to build up your area. We're trying to do, people need to understand that. I, and I get in the COVID world, and I think we're using that quite honestly as an excuse too far. Nowadays is while there's COVID and, you know, things happen and whatever, people have been in their homes. There should be no reason why that we didn't actually have extra participation because they haven't been traveling about. So I think we could have done things better. Quite honestly, than what we have done. Thanks.
Mayor Shagis.
Thank you. And I want to echo Counselor Melnick's sentiments on this as well. When loo- looking at the historical participation in telephone surveys back in the late nineties, it was around thirty-five percent. In twenty eighteen, it was around six percent. Part of that is attributed to the fact that most people, or many people now have call display. Many people are on cell phones. I actually received a call from and was provided an opportunity. Uh, and was provided an opportunity to participate. Uh, in this survey, I did self identify, I did not self identify as neither as a resident in the Carville area. Nor identify myself as the mayor. I just said it wouldn't be um. Appropriate for me to participate, and I left it up. But the inter- interesting thing was, when I get these calls that I that I don't identify. I would say ninety, at least ninety percent of the time, I don't answer. Um, and that could be one of the issues why we had less than one half of one percent. Um, of people participating and answering that call. That's a very poor turnout. It's not statistically relevant. There's very, I would say. There's limited uh, information for councils to make a decision on this. Um, I think as as Counselor Melnick alluded to, um, providing that. The that information to our residents um, through our website, through our social media, but also extending it to some of the other social. Uh, media like the Facebooks of our community halls. Um, you know, speaking for the Carville Hall, we have sixty, six hundred and fifty followers. Um, so asking that community association that's located in the respective hamlet to put post on their um, Facebook page. The county is going to be putting out a survey. If you get a call, you don't recognize the number, please answer it. Um, and please participate because there are important questions asked about investments in your hamlet. Um, just to try to get more people to participating, and I'm hoping perhaps we look at doing that as well to get the word out as we move forward. Um. And one one question I do have on slide eleven, um, Ms. Quinell, if you can put that slide back up. There's. Near the middle of that um. Slide, it has responses, survey responses, but doesn't identify the heading. Um. I would like to know, I think probably council would like to know what what area of focus is that one? So just under Community Peace Officers and roadside. Yeah, this is.
Sorry, that's recreational facilities. I meant to mention that in my comment at the end. Uh, just skipped on the slide somehow.
So those those are my comments. Um. Um, on this item. Thanks very much.
Mi- Ms. Chair, if I can just add something um, further. Um, I just wanted to say, and an opportunity also is to look to our libraries, you know, um. They have a group of people, um, as they're talking, that one on one conversation with people as to why they need to fill these things out, or. You know, uh, we're we're, we just kind of are looking at one way of doing only thing and and just doing it. We have, you know. Many, many, many different avenues within the municipalities to. Get that input in, and I think that we just go back to that, well, let's do a survey. On the on the phone, or let's, you know, let's wait for them to find out if they've looked up Parkland County's. Uh. Page. Um, quite honestly, most people don't care about looking up Parkland County's page to see what's new and grew and and growing, so without information ahead of time.
Okay, Counselor, um, Mayor Shagis, is your hand still raised from before? Did you have another question?
No, it's another question, Madam Chair, if I may, please. Uh, just a comment and observation on on the uh. The question of internet service, um, because that had the highest level of dissatisfaction at sixty percent. Um, this isn't a a service that Parkland County directly provides. It's good information to have. Um, but the that that service is provided by internet service providers or or ISPs. Um, and I find it interesting, um, because we've heard from. Some residents, when there's applications for new towers to put up. Um, they want better internet service, but don't put a tower within eyesight of me. Um, I don't know if they don't understand or don't realize that those towers have, because it's line of sight, it needs to be in close proximity to the homes for them to have better. Um, internet reception. Um, just an observation, because we've seen it and all of council has heard it many times from residents to say. Why is my internet so slow? Why is the capacity slow? Um, hey, there's an application. I don't want that tower here.
I, if I could just um. Add to that, I think that's a good point, and the fact that. Um, internet access didn't correlate with over cap, overall county satisfaction, I think is telling that that people understand that that that's not what we're providing, but I think. The reason we included it is because it's so important to support some of these other services that we are um, looking into. Um, and is as well, um, just life in a rural community. Um, Stephen, I was hoping you could talk to a little bit. Um, the actual number of calls that went out. Uh, it's my understanding that that thirty four, over thirty four thousand calls may not have, like, all been directly. In the county, like that's their way of narrowing into the right area. So if you could just speak to that for.
And I could do, I could do my best with it, Krista, for sure. I mean, not having been the one. Um. Actively organizing the survey, that's our our friends at Trend. Um, I do know from them. That 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 they were quite satisfied with that number, given the appropriate. Phone sur- that hundred twenty seven completed surveys. Um, of course, they they acknowledged there was room for improvement, but they they never had the the hopes of getting up even to that six percent mayor that you were mentioning. Um, as as a number from from the early two thousands. Um, that that was the, the intent was always because they couldn't use the sample to screen out where residents were located. Um, within the county, they weren't able to pinpoint as much as they maybe. As much as we conceptually think they maybe would have been able to, and just make those calls to the people living in and around the hamlets. Um, and I'm assuming a good portion of those thirty four thousand. Calls were to people in and around the the eastern. Uh, edge of the of the county or in and around Spruce Grove and Stony Plain, where like like you did, Mayor, they they identified out. Uh, quite quickly.
Okay, I'm going to ask Counselor Jensen, do you have a commenter question before Mayor?
I know, actually, that was my question, so I appreciate Krista, Ms. Quinell addressing it. Thanks, and thank you very much, Mr. Rogers.
Okay, uh, Mayor Shagis.
Yeah, thank you. And I guess I just need to comment on the thirty four thousand plus um, phone calls that were made. The last federal census had the population in Parkland County just over thirty three thousand.
Hmm.
Okay, um.
Interesting, yeah.
Thank you. Um, I just had a couple of comments. Uh, I I I found this somewhat disappointing. Portland County, we've got a strategy here to reinvest in the community, and. We did have a meeting when at at Entwistle Hall, and we were looking at. Uh, going ahead with the new hub, and there was a lot of excitement that was generated. I mean, people have been seeing. What's happening in their community, and there's a huge amount of money since the dissolution of Entwistle into Parkland County. It's been twenty years since there's been investment in this in this area. It's a strategy. Uh, we have some issues with communication. Parkland, our council recently discussed this with staff, and we're looking for a response to come back, but. Um, you know, we poured millions of dollars, and you know, you think people would be excited. They should be aware of what's happening in their community and. Possibly, there's been some education. We discussed this at Community Sustainability Committee, uh, where this unsure, this neutral element, uh. Uh, if you provide more education, they might be aware of service, and then would be able to respond on a different, coming from a different information basis, so that would help. Uh, I think also that um, in the future, we're looking at studies, uh, looking at the community at large. And how they feel about this type of an investment and how far they want to continue this, because uh. I I have not seen any tracking of the investment, how much money has been tracked. We've had discussions about this, but. I actually haven't seen a report or a tracking of what's been happening in the community. Uh, as an example, another example, uh, it's the level of service. Um, we did talk about um, about transit. And there was a comment that this is highly subsidized, and possibly it's something that's too expensive when you look at. Uh, you know, a twenty eight thousand dollar cost for the three thousand dollar grant. And you get three users, direct users in the area, and they're not willing to disclose why they're using it. They feel it's an infringement, and. The committee is saying, well, that's not acceptable. It's too expensive, and maybe it's something we have to look at how we're delivering. So there has to be a review, you know, you have to consider those types of things, but. I certainly support looking at the community at large. Uh, there are users in a specific area, but the bill is being covered right across the municipality, and so. You know, people are aware that it's, there's economic development, there's benefit, there's tourism, there are, there are aspects. Of Hamlet Reinvestment that are important for the greater community. They want to look at the economics of it as well, and they want to have a say, because they are helping pay that bill, and they likely won't be using those services because they live farther away. So I'll pass those comments, and um, I think Ms. Wayne has her hand up. Uh, I think we've had a fair amount of discussion. Counselor McNabb has the motion on the floor, so I'm looking for closing comments here. Ms. Wayne?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just a couple of comments from me. Uh, obviously, just want to thank Ms. Quinell for bringing this forward, and I I do uh. Uh, recognize council's comments with some issues with the the survey and then how it went out, and I think there's some good. Learnings that we can take for uh, future engagement, especially when we're looking at things like priority based budgeting. We can certainly um, provide the link and some key messaging to council to share that out. Um, and you know, share it out through Facebook in coordination with our communications group. Um, and then I guess just my question to Ms. Quinell and Mr. Rogers. Uh, with the survey still being on our uh, website, is that something we could do for this as well? Um, is just provide the link and some messaging, um, perhaps to uh. Um, create some equity amongst the different areas in the county, or is that something we could look to do relatively soon?
Yeah, so um. I um, that was actually our our plan for the summer was to do uh, to do just that, to do a little bit more advertising. We were hoping to get. Advertisements out in the tax notices before they went out, but with the the fire and tomahawk, our communications department was just. Um, a little bit swamped, so we we missed that timeline. Um, but we were hoping to do a general mail out to the the whole county, as well as some advertising that we've mentioned, like on on our um. Our social media as well, so people know that they do have that survey option, but I do definitely appreciate the comments. Um, especially from from Counselor Melnick in terms of. Uh, why people, people have to understand why this is important to them, so. Uh, we'll definitely work on on that messaging in those um, those those advertisements and and those communications, because. Uh, certainly very, very important for for engagement.
Uh, Counselor Melnick?
Thank you. And and I do really, you know, I came up quite harsh, but it really is about the why. Why are we doing things and and residents need to have that understanding and. You know, um, I totally support this going out to all members of um. Parkland County, uh, rate papers, uh, but also to the. Everybody needs to have an understanding that if we don't grow. Our hamlets, and if we don't invest in those hamlets. Then subdivisions in and around the area are always going to continue, and and there is that that philosophy that then we're going to always be subsidizing our hamlets. So we have to have an understanding about. It's not just about, oh, we're going to give them more. We're trying to grow up those municipalities. Or or those communities within our municipalities, so that economic development can happen, so that extra tax. Resources come to Parkland County. You know, it it's it's about the why. And if we don't start with the why before we go into these, any survey, it doesn't matter what survey we do, if we don't start with the why, then. It's actually, we're not getting true results, I believe. Thanks.
Okay, with that, uh, Mayor Shagis, you have a comment?
Yeah, just one, one question um, from Ms. Quinell and Mr. Rogers. Was there any discussion or contemplation about having the survey opened for uh, the participants to provide comments and suggestions? On um, how to make improvements, um, rather than just this open end question, yes or no, one to five. Um, and asking for their opinions, and I know that'll be part of, and Ms. Wayne talked about priority based budgeting, there'll be an opportunity there. But there's an opportunity here, I think, to get some of that information as well. Um, what do you see as a resident? Uh, as a viable, sustainable investment into your community? How can we, how can the county, how can council make those investments? To enhance your quality of life, to to um, pr- provide you additional employment opportunities, the whole gamut, recreation opportunities. So tapping in, taking this opportunity to get those opinions of of our residents.
Nope, uh, that is a good point. We did have that discussion, so. Uh, we, in order to stay within our our budget for the the project and for the actual. Uh, survey, phone survey, we had to keep it quantitative answers, but people were directed that they could. Um, we have actually two surveys open on the website, one for people that took the phone survey, one for people that haven't. And the one for people that took the phone survey is just an open ended um, forum for them to discuss that in more detail and how they see those those services improving. Um, unfortunately, we have, we we didn't have the budget to keep people on the line and have those discussions with each survey respondent, but. Um, we did offer that option, and I know it's a kind of an extra step that a lot of people won't take, which is unfortunate. But um, but that is the the option that we um, we have for them. And there is that option on the survey for both sides of the survey, so people that are just taking the survey online as well.
Okay. Uh, thank you. With that, we do have a motion on the floor and uh, to Stephen and Krista, I want to thank you very much, uh, you know, for your skill set and uh. Uh, developing and moving forward on this. So there there are many avenues and learnings, and I think you're you're addressing those in a reasonable way, so thank you very much, both of you, for your. Presentation and answering the questions that you have this morning. Thank you. Uh, Counselor McNabb has put the motion on the floor to accept the Hamlet Reinvestment Strategy Update as information. The motion is on the floor, or is there any opposed? Hearing none, that motion is carried. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Wayne, I think that we have an eleven o'clock, eleven fifteen appointment, so I believe we can move to our sustainability policy. Possibly Ms. Quinell will be working on that one as well, under D one. Um, um, if you'd like to introduce that.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So I would like to once again invite Ms. Krista Quinell, Manager of Community Sustainability. Along with support from Ms. Barb Schalke Hardman, Director of Agriculture Services, to present the Community Sustainability Policy. And answer any questions the committee may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swain. Um. So yes, I am going to now shift to presenting our draft sustainability policy for council. Uh, or sorry, for the committee's um, input here, just give me one second. All right. So um, Community Sustainability. Has developed a policy to direct administration in implementing the objectives of the Integrated Community Sustainability Plan. Uh, with the goal of making the plan more actionable and um, potentially to help you utilize some of the technical information. Um, that we've gathered over the past uh, number of years to inform more balanced decisions in. Um, both land management as well as operations and service delivery. Our sustainability policy should really set the standard for public services and programs that are sustainable. Uh, based on council's values and priorities, of course, as well as uh, the strategic direction that we've gotten from council. Uh, it's also the first step in the Community Sustainability Service Area for realigning our policies and directives. Um, essentially, the sustainability policy should will replace our current environment policy. Um, making it more more broad, and we are looking at rescinding policies that are only directed internally and. Replacing those where appropriate with directives, procedures, or or standards. Uh, so just making our policies and uh, procedures and directives a little bit more more efficient and concise. So also, the the policy is also meant to set us up nicely for developing an implementation framework. Uh, for the the Community Sustainability, or sorry, the ICSP. Which will include both targets and uh, KPIs or Key Performance Indicators. And you will note that most of the language in the sustainability policy is actually taken directly from the ICSP itself. Um, with a few updates. In in terms of uh, changing strategies wording more to a a policy format. So um, I'll just run through a couple of the sections in a high, at a high level. So the policy statement actually derives directly from the sustainability end state in the in the ISS, ICSP. And which was developed by our public committee, um, and is. Is the same as the. and which was developed by our public committee and is is the same as the sustainability end state in the municipal development plan. The, in this policy, the the policy statement also includes statements on incorporating objectives into county and community operations and projects. And sorry, I should say, those are the long-term objectives from the ICSP. So the the scope of the policy is looking both internally and externally, so at both of those stakeholders. And this is an important part of the plan, and it it was emphasized in the plan document as um the more we can collaborate with our community, uh the less hands-on the the county has to be and the less capacity that's uh required directly within uh county's administration. In term, in terms of the the standards for the policy document, that's really the meat of the document. And what we've done is we've uh adapted policy statements from the strategies in the ICSP document by adding will or shall, should, may uh statements. So uh will or shall versus should or may, um as well as statements such as support versus encourage versus ensure. Um and that has been based on previous council direction a- as well as other approved uh guiding documents that we have currently in place. But again, we're bringing this, um we don't expect this to be the first time this policy comes in front of the committee uh or council. So we're bringing it here today to uh start kind of a two-way feedback and conversation about uh the direction that we'd like to go in in these areas. So on that, in that sense, we've actually included some very broad statements um in areas where we'd like to garner that. We'd like to understand where council's level of support is. Uh so we can write some more specific direction in the, to the next draft of the policy. So some examples are um things like the extent to which we encourage con- concentrated development or the extent to which we protect uh watersheds and water quality. Uh just in general, um there are other policy areas that we definitely like to um understand council's support on. So we also wanted um the statements or the standards in the policy to in um in a way identify or introduce the KPIs that we will be tracking, but uh but not have them specific enough to set targets or um uh the actual uh indicators as that will come in our implementation framework and reporting. And then finally, just to let uh the committee know about the engagement that's occurred so far. Uh the Community Sustainability Committee has reviewed the the draft document, and there's been a couple iterations since. But um some of the comments that we received from that committee were uh things like that the importance of having another another level of accountability and commitment um from our municipalities to tangible, measurable outcomes or targets um as well as uh the a comment around um how this policy or question, I guess so, could support the the green economy. It's, they didn't see it was uh directly in there, as well as um that the policy should align with um the ramp document potentially, depending on council's support of that. Um and then we did circulate for review with impacted departments internally. Uh and most of the these depart- sorry, these departments were heavily involved in the development of the ICSP. So it was a good exercise in realignment to to make sure that our direction hasn't changed in some of these areas. Um and some some areas we we did uh recognize and we had comments back regarding um those broad statements and that we should look to the committee for uh, you know, some general direction in these areas. And also uh some comments back from planning and development in regards to implementation in their documents with such as the, at the land use by law enforcement level. So some things that we're 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 working on ongoing. But with that, I um that ends my presentation of the policy. And I can turn it back to the committee for any comments, questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cornell. Uh appreciate the overview. Uh as a fairly uh uh lengthy amount of material and going through the policy. And uh what I will do first of all is I will ask um for a mover of the of the recommendation and then I'll open it up for discussion. So um you know, in fact, I could have a motion on the floor and then we'll begin the discussion on this.
Madam Chair, Tracy Melnick, Councilor for Division Six, I'll put forward the motion that the sustainability policy C dash C S zero to be received for information as presented. And if I can start in comment.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. So um I'll start off with um what is the definition of sustainability? And and I guess for what I see a lot, or or my definition of sustainability anyway, what I see a lot in in these documents and as we move forward and a lot of the documents is we have such a heavy focus of the environmental sustainability opposed to a balanced approach around sustainability. And um you know, we we talk about, or it was it was indicated that, you know, this went through our community sustainability committee, it didn't go through our agricultural committee, it didn't go through, to my understanding, the Economic Development, uh Diversification Committee. So I think that we need to really understand that there is that real balance um in there. As I'm uh doing my initial pieces of looking at it, I see, you know, some um statements in and around, you know, community land use economy, but there's such a high focus of the environment. And it makes me say, is this just the Environmental Committee with a different name? Is this just the Environmental Policy with a different name? I guess I need to understand what the, what we are referring to as the definition of sustainability. Because again, it goes to me, sustainability takes all of those factors. Um um I guess I need that answer first. Thanks.
Let's move, I see Ms. Sa- Hart, Shaka Hardman has her hand raised, if if you could provide some input, please.
Yes, so thank you uh for the comment. And and um we did do an internal um uh review of the of the policy with our economic develop- diversification staff and our planning staff and our agriculture staff. But I do, um you know, that is certainly something that we can do is to take this to the Agricultural Service Board and the Economic Diversification Committee. Um and and as we were working through the policy, um we were looking at at the overall environment as well as social, as well as um economics, so the balance of those three. So I think when we use that term, we are looking at it from that that broader perspective. So if it's not coming through in the policy, that I think that's the kind of feedback that we were looking for from council um to refine that wording so that it does make it uh clear that we, it's not just environment, it's it's that balanced approach of sustainability.
Yeah, for myself, it doesn't come through um as the strength of where focus is. Uh you know, there's a tidbit, a you know, a little fingerling out into the other areas, but I I don't see that uh that strength in making sure that we have a balanced approach. There's, there is definitely a much uh greater focus um about the wills around the environment. Um but we're going to make sure this has to be, you know, um and I don't see that flair of how we're going to encourage those um pieces in in the other areas. Thanks.
Okay, with that, I'll move. Uh Mayor Shigus, you're next.
Thank you very much. Um I I'd caution that having a policy that is, that's too general in nature and and makes broad motherhood statements is going to create some challenge. Um I know, and I understand it's, you know, we don't want to be so restrictive, but uh having the, having a very broad policy statement can create false expectations um for our residents in the bit business community. Um and I'll just use one example, under standards for uh community uh subsection A, it says that the county will lobby for and support accessible uh services, programs and facilities that meet health, education, recreation, employment and housing needs for all residents. In the definitions, it says shall or will means mandatory compliance. So it says the county will support accessible services programs. So so does that mean, I I I think as a resident, um a resident say, hey, we don't have adequate recreational um amenities in our area of the county. You you said in this policy that you will provide or will support, um so where's the investment? So I think we have to be a little bit cautious of that, and perhaps if we do have um an opportunity for the two other committees to provide comment, um that can be flushed out a bit uh more as well. Also on community, on subsection D, it says that the county will provide inclusive opportunities for community engagement in community planning, management and program develops- development. So my question here is, what is being referred to or meant by community? Um is this the hamlets or subdivisions, general areas in the county? Um or is it county-wide? And then also, when it talks about uh the community will have an opportunity in the management and program development, are they going to be managing programs? Because that's how this reads to me. Uh are they going to have direct input and shape program development as well? Um again, this could lead to those false expectations um that we have. Under land use, and I recognize we're getting very close to our nine fifteen appointment, uh subsection A, it says the county will consider diversity of agriculture land uses and priority developments while reducing fragmentation and continues on. So the question I have here is, what are or how are priority developments identified? It doesn't have anything in definitions in this policy as to what is a priority development. Um and again, I thi- I believe this, that needs to be identified in the policy, not in an administrative director. Uh I've got other uh comments as well, so I will pause here. Madam Chair, do you want to uh go to the nine fifteen appointment and come back to this?
Okay, Mayor Shigus, that would be eleven fifteen. I think you're maybe on Eastern time or something. Um I'll just briefly, um before we do that, uh Council McNabb, some comments, and Council Johnson, please go ahead. And Mayor Shigus, if you could lower your hand if you're done speaking. Thank you.
Actually, Madam Chair, I think our appointment is scheduled for right now, is it not?
Uh and just um uh through uh our chair to the mayor, um our uh attendee for the eleven fifteen appointment, he's running about five minutes late. So I think if we continue this discussion for another five to ten minutes, we can give him just some time to join the meeting.
If I may, Madam Chair, then I have a few other comments I'd like to uh make.
Okay, well, Ma- Mayor Shigus, I'm gonna, just if you could hold your questions, I want Council McNabb and Council Jensen to have a turn, and then I'll go back to you. Go ahead, Council McNabb.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um my 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 questions are very, I agree with the the previous um council members that spoke here. And um I only have one question in regards to when it's kind of a mix between a high-level document, a low-level document, or a detailed document, where where in our high-level documents, where it's all about um mixed type development or mixed-use type services provided to the community. I I'm I'm not seeing that in here where we we're jumping down into possibly providing some details to those mixed type of um services. Uh maybe that's what we're looking for, is a a little bit of an understanding of what what would come with this policy. And one of the comments I would make is um in regard to the support um econo- economy subsection D, the county will provide support for new businesses, we could read that multiple different ways and what it means. So you know, a- as a as a member of council, you're going to get individuals coming back and saying, hey, you promised some support, and where is that? And then what does that mean? So you know, I just bring that up as a as a uh uh comment. But as I look through there here, it it it's, it is may be, I understand it's the first draft, but um it may be um maybe too high level and because we already have that within our documents or M MDP. And then um people will start looking, and myself included, going, so okay, what are these um statements actually saying? And and where is this support? So I I just make those comments, and I agree with the other others, their speakers there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
If Council Johnson?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair, and and I support that comment, um yeah, Council McNabb as well. And I think that my question is, is that, you know, this ties back to our Integrated Community Sustainability Plan. And certainly, what I would have liked to have seen over this term in council is a much closer length or reporting on that report itself and how we are advancing it, because it is an important document that ties directly to our federal gas tax funding. But it also, as Council Melnick was questioning, fully um explains the um the the concept of sustainability in those, in the terms, you know, that that we want to look at with all the legs of sustainability as important as the environmental focus is. So my question is, is really what, I I read the statement, I understand kind of the purpose of the policy, but what we're trying to achieve by putting a policy that is general like this intended to link to the ICSP as opposed to just implementing the IC- ICSP and getting this done. So I'm just trying to figure out how we'll use this policy, um because there is broad language in here that can create confusion. Because really, it's just the the report, the the plan itself that we're trying to get done. So that's my question. If I was clear, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um. Did you want a response from Ms. Cornell? Is that what you're looking for, Ms. Shaka Hardman?
I would, yes. I'm just trying to figure out where, you know, how the place the the policy is is placed, similar to Council McNabb's uh um you know, comments brought forward as well.
Okay.
No, I I definitely appreciate those comments, and we have had those those conversations as well internally. So the way that we see the policy fitting, um especially since uh we currently do have an environment policy, but I believe it's it's quite outdated. I don't think we have a sus- like, we have a sustainability policy in these other areas, so to speak to to Councilor Melnick's comment i- in that as well. Um the idea with this policy is to um, because the the ICSP is in a statutory document, and if we uh, you know, kind of fit it into that hierarchy of of documents that the council had worked on in the past, uh it was more of a for information document. So the policy would be uh actually directing uh administration more specifically in some of these areas. I do agree, um some of the statements are definitely too broad at this point. So we're, and we're, we're trying to understand where council exactly wants to go on in some of these areas, because these are kind of the standard areas that you would look at in terms of these, you know, community sustainability, uh environmental sustainability, uh economic sustainability. Like, these are typically where we've i- identified in the ICSP, the areas we want to look at. Now we need a little bit more direction on um how we're doing that. And specifically from a, this policy address is not necessarily um implementing actions and services, but more so on a policy level. So it has a lot to do with um planning and development, but it does guide guide service levels to a to a sense as well. Um in terms of reporting, it it has been something uh again, that that we have had on our radar. Um we just haven't had the capacity to get there, um unfortunately. So um I think that that would be my response at this time.
Ju- just to add to that, too, sorry, I was just going to add, uh Madam Chair, um the the direction that we've been taking, I think, within administration is is to um have those higher-level policies that then are going to be directing some more individual work. So for example, um when we brought the agriculture policy forward to council last year, it was it was at a very high level um and and kind of set that overall direction. But then some of those individual supports will be left to administration to try to direct some of those. And so I think we were trying to follow a similar format with this. However, I think what we're hearing is that we may need to get a bit more specific on this policy because it is too broad, so.
Okay, thank you. And you know, uh part of the comment was, uh you know, looking to replace the current environment policy. And uh I I I understand that we're looking at more integration between departments so that there is input on what's happening. And uh you are looking for uh more specifics towards the next draft. Um I know that um uh in the past, there have been some issues raised to how we handle um sighting of towers. And I know that the Chikaku Lake air area stewardship group did come forward with some concerns that they had about public engagement, which I see reflected in this policy and this draft policy. Also in terms of uh what constitutes existing use and that type of development. So uh I see some comments have been incorporated in, and you know, we're looking at the land use policy, the bylaw in the future. So um uh I I think the effort here is to, it's always, it's always an evolution. We're always looking to how how we can improve this process. There's different expectations of the community and how they're engaged and what happens to them and their community and how they have a say in that. So I think those are the kind of comments we would want to keep. So I think those are the kind of comments we would want to keep in mind and certainly reflect from the people in our community. Um thank you. With that, uh Mayor Shagis, uh go ahead if you have a couple of other comments. And then we'll look to going back to the motion by councillor Melnick on the floor and and uh moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, it just goes back to um some of the language in here and the fact that it is quite broad. Um for example, under the economy, that the county will provide support for new businesses, including small business cottage industry. And knowledge-based sector opportunities. So what support are we going to be provided and at what cost? Um and perhaps, you know, a simple um amendments to a lot of these policy statements is. The uh on this one, uh putting in the county will examine opportunities to support. So we're not making that commitment, but we'll look at it as a case on a case by case basis to determine what level supports can be provided. What is adequate support? Um and looking not to bind council and creating those false expectations for residents of the business community. Um there is one uh clause here, though, under environment. It's the last section, pardon me, the last sentence in subsection F that I find very uh perplexing. And it states that the county will ensure leased land holdings are returned to the leaseurs in the same conditions that they were received. I think that's near impossible, if not impossible, to return uh leased lands. For example, if it was for gravel extract extraction. I think this is setting up the county for considerable risk, um costly risk. Uh so let's minimize the exposure um to the county on this. Um and also in the administrative report, it talks about developing KPIs and monitoring uh the outcomes in respect to the four focus areas. But it makes no mention of when that reporting will take place. And I would suggest that in this policy, we need to identify that reporting will come back um to council on an annual basis. Um leaving it wide open and not reporting. Um I'm fine with administration developing the KPIs, but for council to make those investment decisions, the allocation during the budget deliberations. Uh we need to have information and data and that needs to be uh provided through um on an annual basis. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, thank you. Uh our next appointment is just waiting for us, so thank you for those comments. Uh councillor Melnick has put a motion on the floor to receive the draft sustainability document as information. Policy is information, I'll call the question, uh any opposed to that motion to accept as information the draft? Saying none, that motion is carried. Ms. Wayne, we can move to our five point four appointment and hope uh that they are had a chance to reflect and settle. And welcome to community, community of the whole meeting, Dr. Hugh.
Thank you, uh Madam Chair. Uh so our eleven fifteen appointment is a COVID nineteen vaccine outreach and education presentation. From Dr. Jiahu, founder of Nineteen to Zero. Doctor Hu is the primary care vaccine rollout lead at the Alberta Medical Association, clinical assistant professor at the University of Calgary. The chair and co-founder of Ni- of Nineteen to Zero and a family physician. He also works at the East Calgary Health Centre and inner city family medicine practice serving marginalized populations. He is the corporate medical director with the Ca- Canadian Pension Plan Investment Board with Cleveland Clinic Canada. And has previously worked in management consulting for McKinsey and Co. and as a consultant at the London School of Economics. He has advised governments on health uh financing models. Nineteen to Zero was launched at the University of Calgary in August of twenty twenty. The team leads the implementation of Convince Canada, uh COVID nineteen new vaccine information, communication and engagement. The global convince initiative is the product of a series of global dialogues over the course of the pandemic. Um with the City University of New 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 York School of Public Health. The Vaccine Confidence Project at the London School of Hygiene and Tropical Medicine. And the Wilton Park, an agency of the UK Foreign Commonwealth and Development Office. As an independent nonprofit organization, Nineteen to Zero works closely with a broad multidisc- multidisciplinary group of partners. These organizations and individuals come from academia, healthcare, the public sector, private companies. And more to provide expertise across the full range of Nineteen to Zero's activities. From polling and data analysis to healthcare worker outreach, to mass communications and everything in between. This diverse coalition drives the work of Nineteen to Zero. So with that, I would like to welcome Dr. Hu to our meeting today.
Hey, sorry about that. Somebody must have given you a really long introduction, which always makes me blush. Uh hey, hey, sorry, it's not your fault, it's probably my fault. Um anyways, so hi, everyone, I'm Jiah, um maybe a few other things um for context. So I used to be a medic law fellow for Vodals Services, but now help lead the rollout sort of provincially. Um you know, I I I think what we've been doing a lot, I think, in Alberta, as is in the rest of the country. Has been a lot of sort of targeted work around increasing vaccine uptake in what I call urban hesitant populations. Uh so whether, you know, racialized newcomer groups, um or, you know, that's people who are under housed or homeless. And when I look at the map of vaccine uptake today, you know, I you know, I think our cities are pretty good. Uh but you know, I think we do see, you know, lower uptake in, you know, rural areas outside of Edmonton, Calgary. Um that, you know, any any of the municipal centers, frankly. And I think that to date, there hasn't been a whole lot of organized thinking around how to get vaccine uptake higher in these areas. Uh you know, when it comes to something like vaccine hesitancy, uh i- in my mind, it's maybe a. Easy to sort of divide it into two pieces. One broadly is the access piece and there's, you know, no way. A- a- any rural area has access equal to a city, like it's just not possible, but you know, it can be improved. And the other is sort of the constellation of things that I would call sort of hesitancy and concern, you know, how much you trust vaccine. And you know, how worried you are about COVID. Um uh it it's sort of, and and so at this point, we actually are beginning to try to kick off a number of sort of rural initiatives. Um and I work quite closely with AHS and Alberta Health. Um and and so I, you know, what does that sort of mean? Uh as far as Nineteen to Zero goes, you know, we've delivered a lot of educational town halls, probably five hundred or more across the province over the past year or so. Um but the other sort of thing that we've done to work on is, you know, setting up mobile vaccine access points. Um sort of in collaboration with the uh Rural Municipality Association of Alberta and the Alberta Urban Municipality Association. So I think, you know, somebody, um you know, we can reached out to a number of, you know, counties across the province. And I I think, you know, Parkland was interested in hearing a little bit. Um and 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 I I can talk more a bit about sort of like what to do. But I'm curious uh to see, you know, from your perspective, you know, is this issue of vaccine uptake in your area something that needs work on? And if so, you know, how could we best support that? Sorry, that's a, I don't know who to direct that question towards.
Mayor Shagis, uh if Ms. uh councillor Kabasi, there she is.
Oh, no, yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry. Um I just missed your comment, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, it was just a question around, you know, I guess, one, you know, do you think vaccine uptake could be higher? I imagine that's probably a yes. And two, you know, what do you think, like, what can we do Nineteen to Zero or many of the other organizations work with to help increase that uptake? And you know, I I think those things that we could potentially provide range from anything educational, uh which we do a lot of, to even things like, you know, increased access points. Um so, but I think you guys sort of know your region better than I know your region. And so would love to hear some, you know, ways, um if there's anything I think we could help you with.
Okay, I'll open it up, uh sorry about that, I just missed your comment. So I'll open it up to comments and appreciate the background that you've provided. Uh I know in in our area, um actually, I went for a COVID test myself and it was set up at the Trileges Centre. And it was very quick, very effective. And uh I see in some of our uh local wellness centers, there are signs put up that the vaccine is available on a walk-in basis at this point in time. So I think um I think things are are, you know, people are able to access and get the services they want. Councillor Melnick?
Yeah, I was going to articulate that. Uh for a lot of it, it is really a, I'll be honest, I don't understand where our level is in my immediate part of the community. Um I have heard that um like the Drayton Valley area, which I which I frequent, their uptake isn't very high. Um for it, but I believe that there is um about personal choice. And and for some, they're just not going to do it, you know, they they're either aligned it to a political stand or or or. They're just aligned it to the, you know, I'm frustrated stand, it could be that as well. I think you're doing a a very good job at the industry about letting people know why they need to have a vaccine. I myself was one that have actually never taken a flu vaccine in my life. So um I did take this, though. So I did take this, but you know, so um we we all come from different pieces of the world. So so what I was getting with that is, you know, the information came enough to me um to say, okay, well, just don't maybe potentially take this. Uh you know, you might not be able to fight this one off, it's a little bit different than some of the other flus. So um I was going with that, it's like, you got me. So as one that never ever took a vaccine, um so I think that they're doing quite a good job.
Uh Mayor Shagis, your comment.
Thank you, thank you very much, uh Dr. Hu, thank you for coming in this morning and the work you're doing in trying to get more of the uh residents in Alberta vaccinated. And I think one of the things is, and um I I don't have any uh hard data to support this. Um but I think there is a greater hesitancy or a greater element of the anti-vaxers in rural areas for whatever it is. Uh part of it is as well is access. Um and I certainly applaud um the efforts to get the mobile units in uh to provide that. That that is a great service, because as you know, um a lot of, well, there's been a federal and provincial policy to regionalize a lot of those services. Government services, including healthcare services, so they're available in the larger urban centers. Uh but it is interesting, councillor Melnick talked about uh a relatively low uptake in Drayton Valley. Um I did call Drayton Valley because they had, I believe it was eight different clinics that I saw where. Or pharmacies where you could get vaccination shots in Drayton Valley. And so I did call, um I couldn't get an appointment the day um that I made to call. And I didn't subsequently uh reach out again. Um but but it, I think one of the other things, it might be just fatigue. People, people are tired and they think we're almost through this. Um a fairly high percentage of of the residents are now vaccinated. They have either the first or they're fully vaccinated, so I will not get that back vaccination. Part of it is, I think, maybe fear, uh what are the side effects? So it it it's it's education. So I I will leave my comments there. And again, I just want to thank you for for your efforts and also for your willingness to uh join us today to make this presentation. Thank you.
No problem.
Good, Ms. Wayne.
Thank you, and thanks for the presentation, uh great information today. Uh I'll preface my comments by saying that I'm uh double vaccinated. So I'm feel super grateful to have been able to get both of my doses. But I did have a question from uh one of our staff members at the county. And this may be something that uh you frequently um answer or encounter. Uh just around um FDA approval with the vaccines or or Health Canada approval or or anything like that. And um maybe just some information you have around that um and anything that you provide there.
Like how the approval process works?
How the approval process works, and I know there's been comments in the past about um kind of the uh emergency approval. Versus the full approval and all of that, and if there's any sort of uh information you have there. And I know there's some differences between Canada and the States and all of that, but just curious about that.
Yeah, yeah, no, for sure. So a- a- at a very high level, I would say that when it comes to the regulators, they have a traditional approvals process. And a, let's let's call it a fast approvals process, emergency use authorization. Um you know, I I think that process existed before COVID vaccines came to the scene. And it's often used actually for cancer drugs, uh when they they have like a breakthrough cancer drug and you need it like quick. And you don't want people to die from not having it. Um you know, and in terms of the review processes that happen, they're very, very similar. And you know, we sort of expect all of these vaccines to receive sort of full approval, um like in a few months. Um but I, you know, I think that the the fact is, you know, we did try to get these vaccines out as quickly as we could, given the sort of magnitude of the problem. That it was COVID affecting our lives. Uh and I I think that, you know, probably nothing in the history of science or medicine has been sort of scrutinized as much of these vaccines from a safety perspective. So basically, every single dose that goes in every single person, certainly in North America and Europe. Um you know, those safety side effects are like very, very closely tracked, right? And since how we learned about the clotting thing with the AZ pretty quick and the myocarditis thing with the mRNA vaccines. Um and you know, I I the people have expressed sort of questions around, you know, what does it mean to do an emergency use authorization? But I I don't think it means that we skip safety steps. I think it means we just move it faster. Um you know, the, yeah, these bureaucracies, you know, they they there's a certain average in around time and it can be made faster, I think, when when necessary. Did that answer your question, kind of?
Yes, thank you for that.
No problem.
Um I'm going to ask councillor Jensen and then Mayor Shagis for comments, please.
Sure, and thank you very much for the presentation. And and just contemplating, I certainly uh can speak probably to rural areas, especially indigenous communities as well. Just as the mayor said, some level of trust, you know, fear or mistrust um that that can be in those areas. And certainly the momentum, you know, that we see towards uh the drastic reduction in in cases is, to me, indicative of of vaccination success. And hopefully that continues in days ahead. You know, my own personal experience is that I did have my first vaccine when I got it. And um fully attribute it to um compared to my partner who didn't have the vaccine. Probably saving, you know, I I have very dire lung issues. So that um is a story that, you know, I I found success when people share their story as well. It helps people understand what the vaccine does and put yourself out there and be vulnerable with it. Because um you can still get it when you have the first vaccine and but it certainly changes your experience compared to people who don't. And keeps you out of the hospital. Um so I think there's um just overall comment is just that I've been very impressed with um. Once the vaccines did start to roll out with availability throughout the province where I I travel back and forth from frequently. Um certainly watching my kids step up to the plate, the younger generations, without any hesitancy to go and get this done and do their part. And watching them be able to book and uh and get their vaccination with ease and success and and little reactions. So I think you've done, you know, very well, there's always places to improve. But um you know, hopefully, uh when it kind, I don't know if it's time for, you know, the booster conversation. Maybe you can comment to that at some point here, but uh what the next steps are. But it's certainly exciting to see that we're moving forward so quickly compared to where we were a couple of months ago.
Yeah, and and maybe I'll just respond, I'm glad you had a good experience. And one thing you talked about was trust, which with, you know, we do a large end survey of Canadians every week, right? And we've been doing them since well before vaccine was available. And and perhaps the single biggest determinant of uptake is sort of is trust, you know? Like trust in government, trust in public health, trust in those things. And you know, I think that what, yeah, if if I rewind the clock like six months, you know. We we saw, let let's say, as I mentioned earlier, you know, the lower desire to take the vaccine, so to speak. And you know, a lot of sort of racialized, like think of the Cargill meat plant workers population. Um also, of course, sort of in Alberta in general, rural areas. And I I think to sort of, to have gone from there to here has been like, it's basically been a lot of people sort of building relationships. And explaining things to people, but really creating that trust. And and what's interesting is that if you sort of look across the province, talk about reserves a little bit. You know, Sixica in the Calgary zone where I'm from has a super high vaccine uptake rate because people sort of have put in that work. Um we're about to put up a very large project up in Fort Mac, like the Wood Buffalo area. And you know, we think uptake there amongst the sort of the Athabasca Tribal Council nations, probably about forty percent. As opposed to, let's say, eighty percent down in Sixica. And I think when you see those differences, like what I interpret them to be is like. You can address sort of vaccine hesitancy, so to speak, right? I think that, you know, we have done a ton of work around, like we, like everybody, a- a- again, dealing with, again, sort of urban vulnerable populations, right? Um but I think that, you know, in the rural areas, there has not been as much of that work. I think very few people are truly anti-vaxer, right? Anti-vaxer can mean somebody believes the vaccine contains microchips and Bill Gates will control your head with it, right? Like a vaccine hesitant, where like having questions to somebody who's like, I don't know about the long-term side effects, so maybe I'll wait a year or two, right? And I think that's a very, very different sort of mindset towards the vaccine. Um and and so, I mean, one thing I'll just say is maybe a next step for me is like, because of that Fort Mac project, which is actually quite well-funded. Like, we're going to do a pretty deep dive into sort of attitudes and perception systematically, at least amongst a subset of rural Albertans. And I think that as we learn that, like right now, I think that I don't have. And I think that as we learn that, like right now, I think that I don't have a clear sense quantitatively, sort of the the reasons why people aren't getting vaccinated in different rural areas. Um, and and I think with some of that information, like the other thing we do is actually make pretty effective, I think, marketing communications campaigns. We um, and and you know, probably share that with, you know, Parkland and other sort of areas of the province, because I don't think anybody really has designed something targeted, let's say, a rural conservative Caucasian person, which is like, you know, a marketing demographic that has like, as as one example, but I'll shut up now. Um, but I I do think that, you know, we are in a good spot writ large in Alberta, in Canada, that we have the highest vaccine uptake in the world, actually, which is pretty darn shocking. I'm very happy about that. Um, but if I look outside of Edmonton, Calgary, maybe, you know, Red Deer. It, yeah, first dose uptake hovering around sixty or seventy percent, often sometimes lower. Um, it does, like populations remain susceptible. And I don't think we'll have a big blow up this summer because summertime is a good time for, you know, like we just don't see much transmission. Um, but you know, if you're sort of like hovering at fifty or sixty first dose, and let's say, you you probably get close to that for your second dose. Then, you know, you have swathes of the province that remain susceptible to outbreaks in the future, um, which is something that I'd like to avoid. Uh, so, yeah. Sorry, I talked too long. Carry on.
No, that's fine. Thank you for that response. Uh, Councilor Mc, had your hand up, uh, has your question been answered?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only thing I'd like to bring forward, thanks, um, Doctor Hu for bringing this forward. You know, I think we've done actually a wonderful job. It takes um a generation basically to um make any change. And here is society made a change in a matter of a pretty short.
Yeah.
And that's probably where we see our pushback a little bit is um the demographics of um the demograph demographics of the the count, the country and where we're normally a full generation to do any change, and we've done it in a pretty short time. Yeah, thanks for your presentation.
Mayor Shagis.
Thank you, Doctor Hu. I was just, I was gonna ask you, um, what the comments and feedback nineteen to zero is getting from s- some of uh the Albertans and the hesitancies. You talked about trust. And, I mean, this is when when this pandemic first broke, it was referred to as the novel COVID um virus. It is novel. We're, the scientific community, the medical community is still learning um about this virus. And we're seeing it mutate. We've got different variants. Um, I'm double vaccinated. I've got um two doses of the AstraZeneca. About two weeks after I took my first shot, uh, the recommendation was, hey, if you can get an mRNA, and I'm going down. They've let me down.
Yeah.
I still feel well protected. Um, and I guess, you know, the global community, I think, is very fortunate because a lot of the work in developing these vaccines was done years ago with SARS, from my understanding. So, uh, you know, it it's been well documented, it takes, you know, eight, ten, twelve, fifteen years to get a vaccine through the process. And yes, they've been accelerated, but I think they've proven to be very effective um for most people, um, if not all people. Um, but what do you, what are you hearing?
The eight, yes, right, I mean, um, a a few things, and and to the point about the AZ, I mean, I like the AZ, what do I do with AZ? Do I get the same dose to get the second dose? I mean, I think one of the problems, the public health and government response, and I feel comfortable saying that because I work for both these guys. Has been like, you know, like, like it's communications, they're not so good at communicating. Nasi especially, if you heard of them. So they're sort of, we're all like, oh, my God, Nasi, what are you doing? Um, you know, I I I think it would have been better had these bodies explained why they were recommending things, right? A- as opposed to, you know, like I would have said that when you got your second AZ, like the reason to get a Pfizer at that point would have been if you're more worried about the Delta. Right? But I don't think that's always been clear. And I think ninety to zero actually primarily came in existence, came into existence. Try to like have more sort of effective comms, marketing, that sort of thing. Um, but in terms of what we're hearing, right, like, okay, here's like the little three factor model and vaccine uptake, right? Three things predict whether or not you'll get the vaccine. One is trust, maybe the biggest factor, right? And that trust is sort of like that drives, you know, whether or not you think you can take a vaccine that's approved under emergency use authorization, or you think there might be something fishy about it. And that trust, like trust in the government and trust in health writ large are some of those big drivers. And so that's why you'll see that in the United States and to lesser extent in Canada, you know, half the Republicans don't want to get vaccinated, which is why they plateaued way early. They don't have a lot of trust in government. Your second big factor, and you know, I think this is sort of probably a big reason why vaccine uptake is lower in rural and in urban areas, is concern about COVID. And so can just like, how seriously do you take it? How much do you think it affects your life, the lives of people who live ones? And, you know, earlier on, before we had the vaccine, you know, like this this concern made a little concern index. And the extent to which you were worried about COVID was very predictive of every single behavior you would do, whether that was distancing, not seeing a bunch of people, masking and now taking a vaccine. And if we look at other countries, right, like Australia, Hong Kong, like places that have done COVID very well. Their vaccine uptake hovers at like thirty or forty percent, even though they have plenty of vaccine, because they haven't seen COVID really. They have a very few cases. Um, and then the last is sort of, we have trust, we have sort of concern about COVID, and we have access. And those three things actually drive or predict whether people get a vaccine or not in all populations. But what we don't quite understand well enough, I think, for, you know, let's say rural Albertans or rural Canadians, is what sort of proportion like are do those three act like on in 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 sort of leading to the lower vaccine uptake? And that's some of the stuff we sort of want to quantify. Um, but you know, I could say lots of people are like, I'm young, I'm healthy, this won't affect me, or, you know, I don't trust this vaccine. It really hasn't been on market for six months. That is a fact, right? I'd rather wait. Um, or somebody else might say Trudeau's an idiot, like, you know, like, and that, that's actually pretty common, uh, to be honest. Uh, but like, you know, and that actually takes away, like, you know, if you don't trust Trudeau and the local government, you trust the vaccine less. Uh, and and and, you know, I I think that the other, like, some of the, you know, preliminary sort of campaign stuff we're building around sort of rural populations are actually anchored a bit more on, you know, like if they are anchored around freedom of choice, but freedom of choice, more to like stop ever having lockdowns again. Because we are like, I think we never will, actually, but like, we're so close to really, really never having a lockdown again. You know, like, we're so close to herd immunity rape. We're not quite there. And if you look at other parts in the world, Europe, they're all having some little fourth waves, but, yeah, I don't know if I answered your question. That was long and rambling. I'm sorry.
No problem, no problem, Doctor Hu. Um, you know, um, I think, you know, you talked a little bit about uh, there there was politics and there's religion that caused issues with with what's happening with anti-vaxers and people accepting, but, you know, and there are people that are going to agree and disagree, but, you know, at the end of the day, um, a science saves society. You know, people looking at whether they should get the vaccine or not, maybe just look at what happened with the polio vaccine and how you don't see those incidences anymore. You know, there are there are some comparables that people certainly can take into consideration. One thing you did mention, and I wonder if you could talk a little bit about this, is at the point at which you get to herd immunity, that's a term that was talked about initially. Why people might not want to rush out, but uh and get a vaccine, but as we've moved along, people like me that have had double vaccine already and moving along in 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 terms of controlling this, can you talk about herd herd immunity?
Yeah, so herd immunity is like this idea where enough people in a particular population are in immune, whether through vaccine or natural infection. That if there is a case that emerges, it is very few people to infect. So if you think about measles, actually, right, like, we sort of have that for measles. You you might have a case pop up once in a while, but you don't sort of see measles like raging through any particular population, maybe with one exception they'll talk about after. Um, with COVID, you know, and and herd immunity is pretty like mathematically simple to count and conceptually simple. It really is a function of one, how infectious the virus is. So measles is one of the most infectious viruses with an R naught of about fifteen. We think the Delta variant probably is an R naught of about, oh, I don't know, four to five now, which is, you know, eighty to hu- hundred percent more than out and regular COVID, the stuff that first got hit with. And the other is how good the vaccines are reducing transmission. Um, and, you know, with the two dose mRNA, probably like ninety percent at least, which is pretty good, actually. In fact, very good. Um. Uh, what's interesting with herd immunity is that we can conceptualize it sort of at a national level, at a provincial level, but sometimes it makes more sense to conceptualize that it is smaller. Right? So we've worked a lot with the Hutterite communities above Alberta, and their vaccine uptake rate is not very high. Right? So I would say that even if everybody like around them was immunized, if a single case enters a Hutterite community, their entire population is susceptible once more because they don't have a vaccine uptake rate. And so, you know, we, what you sort of want to, and what I was saying, sort of like, the various rural areas still susceptible. You know, even if the cities are immunized up to ninety percent or whatever, and they're not yet. You know, if you have a low uptake area, that geography, that area, that population is susceptible to sort of an outbreak again. Um, and so you can think of herd immunity as sort of even like a very regional subpopulation level.
Okay, um, I I did receive um uh an information education package in the mail, a little brochure. I was looking for it earlier. I thought you could just pull it up when you were talking. But, uh, you know, there are efforts. We see efforts, continual efforts to try to create awareness and improve the level of vaccination. So um, the questions that you raised today, uh, and asking our council with our staff as well. Have you got a sense of um better understanding of what might be happening in this part of rural Alberta? Is this what you're looking for?
Yeah, yeah, no, it it was helpful. I mean, I like what, like, I I think that, you know, it seems certain places like Drayton Valley, like, don't actually have a huge access problem. You're saying they have a clinics, maybe, maybe not. You know, I think that the comments around, you know, we're sort of just done with this, our comments that we sort of, you know, we we hear. Um, and, yeah, no, th- this is, yeah, it has been helpful. I I I I think that for our organization, sort of our next steps in the sort of near-term future will be to sort of begin to sort of more robustly collect information on sort of rural Albertans writ large and develop campaigns specifically targeted sort of at those demographics. Um, in parallel, I think that, you know, if there are any further questions you have or needs in terms of you know, vaccine access, like shoot me a note. You guys are in the primarily the Edmonton zone of AHS, right? Like, I I I, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Pretty good friends with those guys, too. And so, um, you know, I I I as more, sort of get more stuff and I'll share sort of with you and the other sort of counties across the province. Um, and and if you have any questions or anything I can help you with, just drop me a line. But thanks very much for chatting. It was a good chat.
Um, Doctor Hu was gonna ask you for closing comments, but I think you've accomplished that. So with that, uh, I think we've had some good dialogue and some good feedback here. We appreciate the information you've provided and from your comments, uh, you're getting a sense of uh what might be happening in terms of pulse in rural Alberta with vaccination acceptance and not acceptance. So, uh, thank you very much. I appreciate your time today and uh uh, you know, the seriousness of this matter and, you know, so there's optimism. We're moving forward at the end of the tunnel here and things are moving back to normal. I know I am myself, I had a family barbecue over the weekend and I haven't had that. It was so nice. The grandkids are saying, you know, gee, it's so nice to come and visit. So people are getting to do those kind of things and the normalcy is starting to kick in, so.
And they should, yes, I'm glad.
For your, your wonderful work and the support for the medicine in our community. Uh, Doctor Hu, thank you. You have a good day, and uh, if the mayor would like to put forward a motion, we'll receive the presentation as information.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would be glad to put that motion forward uh that the COVID nineteen vaccine outreach and education presentation will be received from information as presented.
Okay, thank you. Um, eh, any opposition to that motion? Saying none, that motion is carried. Doctor Hu, thank you very much. Enjoy your day. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. We can move back to item uh, the draft community sustainability policy. Uh, Councilor uh Melnick has a motion on the floor to accept the motion. Uh, is there any other discussion or comments uh from council members or staff at this point? Seeing none, the motion is on the floor to accept the draft. Uh, there will be more specifics into the next draft, and I assume Ms. Wayne, this will be coming back to council for another read at a later point, taking into consideration the comments raised today.
Yes, it will be, Madam Chair.
Okay, with that, anyone opposed to the motion? Saying none, that motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, and um, we are just getting to noon here. Uh, Ms. Wayne, uh, did we want to uh does council want to take a uh five-minute break, or do you just want to continue through the rest of the items? No call for a break. I guess we can just finish up. Okay, uh, D two, I believe, would be uh the next, the Wabham communication strategy update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'd like to invite Sarah Mate, Director of Community Services, along with support from Joshua Culling, who is the manager of current and long-range planning, and Avery Dawes, who was our municipal projects co-op student, to present the Wabhamen communication strategy update and answer any questions that the committee may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wayne. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the committee. Uh, we are before you today to provide an update on the communications efforts uh and the strategy that we've been using, supporting the transition of Wabhamen from an independent village into a hamlet within Parkland County. Um, I am screen sharing. Would someone mind just confirming that you can see the presentation?
We can.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it looks good. Thank you.
So our goals, you know, for communication and specifically with the plan for communicating to Wabhamen residents include uh, public and stakeholder support for the transition to Parkland County. Collaboration across departments to ensure that info is thorough, factual, and timely. An engaged community that contributes to municipal policy and solutions, and to establish and build upon mutually beneficial relationships with residents. The approach uh that we have been and and plan on continuing to use includes providing information that is timely, accurate, clear, accessible, and responsive. Using the most appropriate communication tools to address the needs associated with each circumstance. Proactively informing the public about the transition and its progress at relevant points. Communicating the benefits of incorporating Wabhamen into Parkland County for stakeholders and the public. Some of the key messages that we have been and will continue to use include Wabhamen is a welcome and valued addition to Parkland County. Uh, Wabhamen still retains its unique identity while joining Parkland County. Residents are encouraged to be active participants in their community. The county is monitoring Wabhamen's specific issues and will respond appropriately. And any changes made in Wabhamen are to harmonize policies and procedures throughout all of Parkland County. So this is just a bit of a a triangle to show the tools that we plan on using. Uh, one thing that's been really positive with the village, the former village, now hamlet, is that the community is very active on social media, which is a a great way to reach people instantly. Uh, we have noticed that that is one of the best ways to reach that group of folks in our county. Um, but we also want to use other tools as well. We don't want to just rely on social media. So we are planning on doing some printed material. Um, a single-page newsletter, something that would be reminiscent of the former Parkland communicator. Uh, we'd like to look at an end-of-year report, which would summarize what's been done and how it affects residents. Um, and then a Wabhamen-specific resident guide outlining all that Parkland County has to offer and how to access services. Um, we're really excited about this one because we feel like it's a good opportunity to create or recreate the former Welcome to Parkland County guide. Um, and kind of use this as a jump off for any new resident to Parkland County, uh, to align them with, you know, the rural lifestyle. We also plan on having a presence at different public events as they may occur. Um, we are hoping to participate in the Summer Fest event. Um, we'll look to be, you know, part of the the new Fire Hall grand opening, and we've been watching, obviously, with COVID, uh, it's now ending. Hopefully, there will be more events that we can tack on to and and just provide that outreach to the community and make sure that they're getting the information that they need on how to be a county resident. Some of the topics that we know we need to cover or have covered um include buyer law repeals, utilities and taxes, uh, service level changes. And that's both positive, you know, and and just some that just may be different. Um, fees and charges, permits, community events, sport field bookings. Um, we we have a a document that outlines the recommended repairs that were done. Um, this document was created prior to the the village joining as a hamlet. Uh, the Hamlet Reinvitalization Strategy, which uh the committee heard from already this morning. Um, the Municipal Development Plan and how that works. Um, you know, we we will have to incorporate the village into the Parkland County MDP, and and there is a lot of engagement that takes place with that and communication as well. Uh, status of the Village Office, the new Fire Hall, the transition of Jubilee Hall. Um, and then, of course, tourism and visitor issues is uh can is something that does come up from time to time. So far, we're we're really happy. We we seem to be off to a really good start, and I just have a couple screenshots here that just show some of the feedback that we've been receiving from Wabhamen residents or that we've noticed on social media from different people. So, you know, there there was a a clear uh positive reaction uh when folks got their tax notices. Um, as well, you know, one thing that's been really positive for us is with the grant funding that we received for the transition, we were able to bring on some additional communication support. And that is Ms. Chris Kristen Allen, who is And that is Ms. Chris Kristen Allen, who is presenting with me today. Um, and so, you know, having that dedicated support means being really in tune to the needs of the community, the conversations that are happening and being able to pivot and respond extremely quickly. So one example would be with the Spray Park. Um, you know, the Spray Park in Wabamun was not run at all last year. We, when it was handed over to us, you know, there were some concrete repairs, also some plumbing repairs between Communications, Parks and Rec and Recreation, they were able to get that done in in record speed um, and get kids out there enjoying the Splash Park. Now, of course, we had the very unfortunate weather um, with the with the heat and the water advisory that meant we did have to shut it down. We were able to communicate so quickly and effectively. Um, so really excited about how that's going, uh, very positive for the transition overall, I believe. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions the committee may have. And as Ms. Swain mentioned, I do have Ms. Allen and Mr. Culling with me if there's any specific questions that they could answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. May. Thank you for your information and your report this morning. Yeah, I found it really interesting that you have found a direct means to effective communication with this group and it seems to be working well, particularly with the responses you've had had back, so got back. So that's very positive. Um, I will open it up to members wishing to speak to the to your presentation. I think first of all, though, I will ask for a mover of the recommendation to receive this information. We can put the motion on the floor and then we'll open it up to questions. Counselor Jensen, you moved on.
Sorry, I had my mute wasn't working here. I'll make the Wabamun Communication Strategy Update be received for information as presented.
Okay, did you have any comments you'd like to make?
No, thank you for the presentation. Very good.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor McNabb, McNabb has his hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks for the presentation. Um, Ms. Mate, um, you know, I do recognize that group, um, in Wabamun, there's a lot of social media type communication. And as I belong to the community chat there, I I I read quite a bit of the stuff that is being posted there. But we also have to recognize that it might not be everybody. And as you mentioned, we're gonna also have that form of communication that's back out there to the individuals that aren't necessarily playing on social media, but utilize social media to what lever level they want. Um, but you know, it's a it's a great source of information, you know, social media could be good and bad. And it's a great source of information to see in general what's going on in any community. And but we got got definitely got to recognize that not everybody's there. And we got to figure out that better form to to try to capture those individuals that aren't there and it'll never be there. But um, I I I know you understand that, then we're working towards that. But thanks very much for the presentation.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Melnick, did you have any comments?
No, I have none. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Shigus comments?
Uh, no, I don't. Thank you. Just appreciate the presentation and the work that uh, the departments have taken to ensure that the residents in Wabamun are are made abreast of all all our efforts um, and the process as we go through the transition period. Thank you.
Okay. Um, any others closing comments, Ms. Mate, your your staff would like to offer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Allen, is there anything you'd like to say while we're here with committee? Your experience communicating with the the local community in Wabamun?
Uh, yeah, I just to address Counselor McNabb's comment, um, referring back to the presentation. Um, I definitely agree with him. Uh, in a rural community, not everyone is active on social media. And that's the intention behind the pyramid, the bottom of it being so heavy material, which um, I, we want to make sure that everyone's informed and up to date and active in the community. So social media is a great way to monitor what's going on out there, but to communicate with residents, printed media is definitely to be our go to. And we are wanting to direct everyone to visit Parkland County's Wabamun page to get the latest and greatest information. So. Thanks.
Okay. You have your hand up?
Yeah, thank you. You know, a point was just made about how the social media, you know, isn't always the, it's a great way to monitor, uh, opposed to maybe engage. And I think it goes back to what was said earlier in our different presentations about how do we engage our residents as to what's important, Hamlet reinvestment strategies. It is about that printed material. It is about getting to them actually into their mailbox, so they have an understanding, the why's whatever. Don't rely just on social media. And I think that this proves it as well, um, as your comment just indicated. Thanks.
Okay. With that, Ms. Allen, thank you very much for your input there and uh, appreciate the comments in the report, Ms. Mate. Uh, there's no other comments or questions. Uh, we received that as information. Counselor Johnson has put the motion on the floor to receive the update. I'll call the question. Any opposed to that motion? Seeing none, that motion is carried. Thank you very much to you and your staff, Sarah, and for for Ms. Allen for providing input today. Thank you. Have a good day. Okay, with that, I'll turn this back to uh, to sorry.
I believe, Madam Chair, we're on, uh, we're going to go to item seven F one now.
Okay.
If you want. Yeah, that'd be great. Uh, so I'll invite Rochelle Trevado, who's our Senior Planner of Development Planning, Thomas Lippiet, who's our Development Planner, along with support from Nancy Domagen, who's our Director of Planning and Development Services, to present the Land Use Bylaw Optimization Strategy Update and answer any questions that council may or that the committee may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swain.
Perfect. I just want to double check that you guys can see my screen there, the land.
I do look good, Ms. Trevado. Thank you.
Perfect. So as Laura mentioned, um, Tom and I are here today to present the Land Use Bylaw Optimization Strategy. Um, but I'll just let throw it over to Tom just to provide a bit of an intro.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Um, welcome to the Development Services Planning Presentation on the Land Use Bylaw Optimization Project. Before we start, we just wanted to take a couple of seconds to to speak to the document package that the Committee of the Whole was provided um, prior to the, prior to today's meeting. Um, and on the cover page of that, that document is an image, and that's the image we just wanted to speak to before diving into the presentation. And it's just a a simple picture of an open door. Um, and that open door, we we chose that picture because it's the experience that everyone should have when they develop land in Parkland County. Um, but right now, many individuals who bring their businesses or their homes to Parkland County are are not having this experience. But there's an opportunity to make that right. And what we'd like to share with you today is the the work that sets Parkland County on the path to achieve this goal. So with that in mind, I'll just pass it back to Rochelle to introduce the outline of our presentation today.
Thank you. So for today's presentation, we'd like to step the committee through the Land Use Bylaw Optimization Strategy Document that, uh, as Mr. Lickett has mentioned, is attached to the committee's agenda package today. Um, we'll be speaking to the rationale behind the strategy, the optimization of the Land Use Bylaw, um, the overall strategy, and finally, we'll both be happy to answer any questions that the committee may have on the topic. So the last major review of the Land Use Bylaw occurred in two thousand nine. This included a complete rewrite of the bylaw. In two thousand sixteen, a rewrite of the bylaw was initiated with some minor administrative amendments being completed in two thousand seventeen. However, the project was canceled due to budget constraints. At that time, the bylaw was reformatted with only minor changes to the regulation and a new cover page. What we are left with in two thousand twenty one is a bylaw with a majority of regulations that are still from two thousand nine. A lot has changed in not only the county, but the development industry and how people to choose to live and work since two thousand nine. So outdated references are quite apparent throughout the bylaw. The Land's Bylaw Optimization Strategy before you today is different from years past in that it proposes a continuous focus on bylaw improvement with no traditional starter and date. Um, this will ensure that the bylaw remains in its optimal state with staff dedicated to making sure it remains as such.
So moving from the why to the the who piece around the why, the Land Use Bylaw, this slide speaks to the 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 folks who are impacted by the Land Use Bylaw. And in short, it's all development in Parkland County. The word cloud here has a a number of groups that are affected, uh, that includes developers and landowners, members of council, uh, and administration among others. But effectively, those two groups can be divided into into the public sector and the private sector. But right now, a major issue with the Land Use Bylaw is that it's it's written for the regulators. And that doesn't really make sense because it's the developers and the landowners and the businesses who are actually putting shovels in the ground and bringing the development to Parkland County that adds value. So the impact of the Land Use Bylaw should be um, that it attracts landowners and businesses who are bringing that value. And when they're in the process of applying for something like a development permit uh, as part of the 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 effect that the Land Use Bylaw has, that should be a positive experience. Could we move to the next slide, please? So that brings brings the conversation to a point about optimization and 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 sort of what's to be done. And an optimization is different than improving the Land Use Bylaw with with these issues in mind. Um, and and rather than improving, which is, which is a less accurate approach, optimization is actually looking towards a sweet spot. It's it's not improving beyond the optimal point, beyond that sweet spot, um, where maybe you're dedicating too too many resources to a project, um, with with limited marginal benefit. Or maybe you're not undershooting that sweet spot because you're you're improving not enough. So the approach uh, that we're taking is is really optimization and being very, very critical about making sure that it's the right number of resources and the right approach and the right outcomes. So currently, the outcomes that the Land Use Bylaw has is let me summarize in the four points on the left hand side of this slide. There's negative economic impacts in regards to the fact that um, we're approached quite regularly with with proposals for development that objectively speaking are very reasonable but are not supported by the current regulations in the Land Use Bylaw. Um, or delays uh, in in the current process that's imposed by the Land Use Bylaw ultimately results in um, perhaps some development going to other municipalities. The Land Use Bylaw is not user friendly in its current state. Um, uh, Rochelle had had referred to some outdated language, uh, something that something that comes to mind is a reference to um, satellite dishes, the nineteen eighty satellite dishes, the big ones that you see on on lawns uh, from time to time. That that's an example of of some of the language that's in the Land Use Bylaw. Suffice to say, it's it's not not a very user friendly tool. Um, there are conflicting interpretations that come out of its current status as well, too. And and number four, but uh, but certainly not uh, number four in value is is the unrealized county vision. The Land Use Bylaw is where the rubber hits the road for the municipal development plan, county's vision. Um, uh, sorry, council's vision for the county. Uh, and those regulations are really manifested in the Land Use Bylaw. And currently, that vision is unrealized because of the, um, because of the state of the Land Use Bylaw. So ideally, the Land Use Bylaw should have outcomes that include streamlined regulations, transparent and consistent decision making, an optimized user functionality, uh, and and deliver on the county's strategic vision.
So development planning, we've monitored and tracked the effectiveness of the Land Use Bylaw regulations over the years. Um, this is done in a number of ways. It includes feedback we receive directly from applicants and ratepayers, um, monitoring emerging trends and our regular use and own interpretation of the bylaw through application, review and development inquiries. The overall strategy initially organizes those items that have risen over time into what we're calling calling building blocks. So the building blocks are to be treated as individual submissions to council, and each one looks at a different part of the bylaw. By treating each block as individual submissions, um, any risk associated with a contentious topic is kind of compartmentalized, um, ensuring work associated with other building blocks remain unaffected and overall timelines wouldn't be impacted. So as part of the first optimization cycle, because as we has mentioned, this is an ongoing process, um, we've identified twenty two building blocks. So as noted in the in the um, attachment to committee today, administration is proposing building the Land Use Bylaw basically from foundation up. So starting with those foundational items that must be considered at the outset of the strategy, and then following those foundational items, the building blocks identified in Appendix B of the document would be completed. So we'd like to step, um, the committee through one of the building blocks as an example. So common issues that have been identified as a resist, as a result of existing regulation and development process um, includes perceived lack of transparency between applicant, the decision maker and adjacent landowners, just frustration with the process and a number of subdivision and development appeal board hearings. So this building block, community consultation and notification uh, will be tailored to examine the ways in which the community is engaged when it comes to future developments or issued development permits in their area. It'll look at how and when feedback is sought, articulate how that feedback is used, and will examine if development permit decisions can be communicated in a better manner. Um, for instance, right now, our Land Use Bylaw only requires a mailed notice of a hundred meters to adjacent landowners. But is this the preferred method of notification for county residents? Should it be done digitally? Should notifications be placed on site? Um, for instance, it's just to the landowners. So if there's a long term renter, they're not notified. So should renters be notified? Um, these are all questions that we'd want to seek answers to through that building block. And then ultimately linking back to the goal of transparent and and consistent decision making. So that's an example there and I will move on to the next slide.
So so we mentioned earlier that the the strategy is is a continuous, uh, a continuous endeavor. Um, so in spite of the fact that there's the word project at the top of some of these slides, what that's meant to refer to is that we're using best practices in project management. So while it's a continuous endeavor, um, and ongoing cycles, there are, there are twenty two building blocks. There are pieces, twenty two building blocks in the initial cycle that we've identified. Um, and within those building blocks, we can use uh, best practices in project management um, to to start and end each of those building blocks and deliver them effectively. This slide just speaks to the tools that we're using, um, to be very, very specific and accurate um, with the way that we're approaching the work. The first is to identify the scope. We spoke to that about the twenty two building blocks. Next, we take those twenty two building blocks and we actually sequence them in timeline. And uh, our estimate currently is thirteen hundred and fifty one working days, very specific um, about the amount of work that would go into delivering this. And and then that thirteen hundred and fifty one working days can be translated over to a calendar. And and we can see where the project will fall relative to known risks uh, that that potentially could could affect the project. Things like election cycles, um, or budget decision making. And uh, and ultimately, that leads to the the conversation about the the resources on the next slide. So the the project schedule, uh, that's shown on this guy slide here, it operates under under the assumption of having two dedicated staff members working on the project. And the first first cycle would would for the twenty two building blocks would take until approximately mid two thousand twenty four. So this is taking the 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 number of working days and assigning it to um, to the the staff members uh, that that would be dedicated to the project. This crosses three budget cycles um, and and one election cycle, uh, that which is just coming up in October here. Uh, but the main takeaway from this slide is that we've we've done the math to see what what the timeline would look like if if current staff was was used to deliver this project. And and the way the current staff currently works to uh, address issues with the Land Use Bylaw is in a side of best project. And our best estimate is that it would take over twelve years to to complete the first cycle of the project using existing resources. And that's a very, very optimistic estimate as well, too. And and members of council are aware of the um, of the the service levels that um, that are being seen right now on the development permit side and whatnot. Um, so that twelve year estimate is optimistic at best and realistically means that the project wouldn't happen, the project in that first cycle. Um, because it crosses twelve budget cycles, it crosses four election cycles. And over twelve years, the issues that may be addressed, new issues would come up and and effectively the Land Use Bylaw would be back to where it's at. So there is a recommendation for uh, for for how to address this as well, too. But I'll I'll pass it back to my colleague to speak to some.
Yeah, so, um, as we've mentioned throughout the presentation, we see the overall strategy is continuous. It's a continuous process that we're we're recommending. Um, however, that first optimization cycle, um, we'll see the deliverables being rewritten and consolidated with Land Use Bylaw, incorporating the work that would have been done through those twenty two building blocks. And we'll also have a comprehensive digital interface for the bylaw, because that is a missing piece right now in the digital age. Our bylaw, um, as it functions on the website, um, really doesn't do any any rate payer, any help when they're trying to access what rules apply to their lands. Um, so they will have improved by law, digital presence, um, that most users will be able to access. that most users will be able to access a document in an efficient manner. And then finally, we'll have a document. We'll document the internal processes and procedures related to those 22 building blocks if anything changes. So that'll help to contribute to consistency as well as transparency in how those regulations are applied.
So there are several options for council's consideration moving forward. And in terms of the return on an investment, there's an option to pursue the status quo, which would require no new investments, and an optimized land use bylaw, which would require a different level of investment that's currently dedicated towards the maintenance of the land use bylaw. So the results of pursuing the status quo would result in three main outcomes. The first would be foregone assessment revenue. And this manifests when developers approach the county and the county is not ready. The council's vision hasn't been driven down into the land use bylaw, and the table isn't set for those developers to effectively be welcomed with that open door that's on the cover page of the document we shared. And examples that we can point to are Pinnacle. There was some work that needed to be done on the background. We weren't ready for them when they came, and there was a time delay associated with that. Solar farms are a very interesting new topic, where there's a very concrete proposal that we're working on right now and a second, much larger one that the county's also been approached regarding. And recently, there was a proposal, for example, an upgrading facility in the Ant Whistle area that unfortunately wasn't able to be accommodated, but was essentially a vegetable processing facility that would upgrade to aircraft jet fuel. Now, this foregone assessment revenue ties in with the idea of a competitive disadvantage in the region. And in the sense that right now, the city of Edmonton is redoing their land use bylaw. The county of Le Duke is redoing their land use bylaw. And to be very honest, Parkland County's land use bylaw hasn't stepped into the 21st century yet. And if those land use bylaws are ready and the table is set in those municipalities, when developers are sniffing around the region to find someplace to land, it might be to Parkland County's disadvantage to not have that table set. And then in the middle piece there, the result of the status quo would be the continuation of some customer service issues related to the facts that we've pointed to earlier in the presentation. On the other side is an optimized land use bylaw where the opposite would be true, where increased assessment revenue is a viable assumption from the results of this project, customer service excellence, as well as a competitive advantage in the region. With that, we would welcome any questions.
Oh, Councilor Kvasiak, I believe you're on mute.
Madam Chair, you're still on mute.
Sorry, my screen went to a different format. Okay, thank you very much, Tom and Rochelle, for that information. I'll open it up for a motion. Councilor McNabb, you're up. If we could put a motion on the floor, and then I'll open it up to discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Councilor John McNabb, Division 5. Bring forward a motion that the land use bylaw optimization strategy update be received for information as presented. And if I can make a couple.
Sure. Thank you. That motion's on the floor. Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks very much, Madam Chair, and thanks very much for bringing forward the concept and I guess the effort on trying to improve on our land use bylaw. That's for sure. So comments, you know, and I'm just trying to wrap my head around the land use bylaw perspective, the 22 building blocks and isolating those building blocks out and moving forward. And I got questions in regards to that. And they all have to fit together somehow. So I imagine there's a plan, an overall plan, to pull out a building block, but still not leave the other ones behind, because it's not in isolation. That land use bylaw is meant to read my understanding as a whole. And there's probably a plan for that. And my next question in regards to that, in regards to possibility, you know, moving forward, if there's a couple FTEs, full-time employees, looking at that, would that be a dedication to this plan, to this model? Or would those type of individuals be incorporated into the land use development team? Or would it be dedicated just to make this happen? That was my questions.
So through the chair to Councilor McNabb. So to address the first portion about the concern about if you're looking at it as isolated building blocks, how are you making sure that you guys are, that we're working to the same goal and something doesn't get left behind? That's why, as part of those foundational items, that's where it really sets the stage for how we move forward with the project. We've been monitoring the bylaw for quite some time, and we've organized it for ways which we can ask targeted questions to residents and get targeted feedback. But also as part of that foundational stage is we're looking at a communication strategy as well. So that means if we had public engagement on it, you don't just go for, like, let's say, lot grading, or you're not just going for secondary suites or something like that. It's an opportunity to have a few of those building blocks there at once. So the residents understand the project as a whole. So can see coming down the line, what are the other building blocks that we'll be working on that year or at that time? And they can kind of see how it can interconnect. But we do want to make sure that we are pretty clear when we're going for specific amendments on specific items. And then in terms of the full-time positions, that would be associated with dedicated to amendments. But I believe that our director here, Nancy Dongegen, she is on the line if she wants to speak to that a bit more.
Sure. Thank you very much, Ms. Travado. Through you, Madam Chair, to Councilor McNabb. The intent would be to have those two FTEs as a separate work unit, if you will, within the development planning area that would be dedicated to maintaining the bylaw. So doing this, going through this cycle to update the bylaw and optimize it, and then that continuation of bylaw maintenance going forward from there.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Dongegen. That answered your question, Councilor McNabb.
Yeah, good for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Shigas, you have your hand raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just curious. So there's a request here for two additional FTEs on a move-forward basis. Has there been discussion about the benefit or value to having the land use bylaw update done by a third-party consulting firm? Both to expedite the process so they could have, say, half a dozen people working on this? We can get these amendments through quicker, start realizing and capitalizing on the opportunities that are available to us that currently are restricted because of our land use bylaw? And also just having external eyes and a fresh perspective, looking at potential improvements to the bylaw? So I'll just wait for an answer on that first.
Okay, possibly Ms. Domagen would like to speak to that. I believe the document did provide that information on in-house or consulting, and the advantages of going in-house rather than consulting. Ms. Domagen, if you'd like to speak to that?
I can, and then I can pass it over to Mr. McGowan, who probably has a few comments there as well. So through you, Madam Chair. We did consider the idea of a consultant, and there are a couple of things there. In terms of cost, you're typically doubling your cost. So in lieu of paying a salary, you're paying the charge-out rate, which is quite a bit more. The other concern or risk that I have with that is consultants can sometimes repackage other land use bylaws or repackage other documents that are done in other municipalities. And what we're looking at here is to be front-of-line, to be innovative and forward-thinking, and do something unique, and a made-in-Parkland County approach. So we did speak about pros and cons of a consulting firm, but we settled on having something that was born and bred within the county and going from there. So over to Mr. McGowan.
Yes, thank you, Nancy. You hit exactly. I mean, we have discussed this at length, that the different options that we could take. You know, for a project that's going to take full time and take a few years to complete, it is certainly going to be more expensive for the consultant. They typically have their rate, and it's typically doubled their charge-out. So it would be very expensive. But really, the important part here also to consider is, I think, we have staff that understand where council is, where our development community is, and where business is. And what we want to do is, we do not want to have a land use bylaw which is a cookie cutter of another municipality. And not to discredit consultants, but you do get that a lot of times, and we're all familiar with that. We have staff that understand council and understand the development community. And we want to be truly leading edge. We want to be in front of the curve. We want our land use bylaw to be developer and business-friendly and meet the needs of our county at a leading edge and not just have a cookie cutter. So that's really the main point, and I think it's very, very important. And I must say, you know, with our discussions and the leadership and the staff that we have now in the Planning and Development Department really are keen, they understand all of those dynamics. And so it's pretty exciting. It's a huge undertaking. We know it's well overdue. It's been pushed for quite a number of years. And so we're all really, really excited to move forward with something really innovative and something that we can all be proud of, and developers will be, you know, very inviting for developers. So those are my comments.
Okay, just before I go to the other questions, I just wanted to ask you. You mentioned it's overdue. I understood the Municipal Government Act, there was a timeline that municipalities are expected to review with community and municipal development plan, different statutory documents and related documents. It was not the land use bylaw. Is there a time requirement for review and consultation with community?
I can pass it on to the experts here in the Planning and Development Department. But we have been addressing the land use bylaw, especially as it relates to any changes in the MGA as it goes on. But it's been piecemeal, and it's been sort of a little bit all over the place. What we really want and what we need is to have a fully-integrated, fully cohesive land use bylaw that works in symmetry with all of its components. But insofar as the land use bylaw, I think that we're required to update it as and so that it conforms with the MGA. Maybe Rochelle, you have some further information if there's any specific larger overhaul that required under the MGA.
Yeah, to the chair. So basically, you kind of addressed it already. Like, the Municipal Government Act requires that you have your municipal development plan. It requires that you have your area structure plans in place. It is a best practice to have it about, like, your municipal development plan and those area structure plans about those three to five years. But really, in actuality, when you start to look at those actual statutory plans and how it relates to a land use bylaw, your land use bylaw should reflect the goals and ideals through those forward-thinking documents, so the municipal development plan and the area structure plan. What happens sometimes with municipalities, you get caught in the trap where your land use bylaw has never been redone due to resourcing or whatever the, what other case may be in that municipality, that it hasn't been updated to reflect a new municipal development plan or hasn't been updated to reflect a new area structure plan. So if you guys, if the committee recalls back in December when we were looking at the Atchison Area Structure Plan, or even previous when we did our industrial districts bylaw amendment, the land use bylaw had never been amended to meet that area structure plan. So, long story short, you should do it within those five years because your statutory plans are getting amended within those five years. So it should follow closely suit in the ideal world.
Okay. I have a few questions. Possibly, Ms. Wayne, your hand was up, and then Mayor Shigas, did you want to have a question, Ms. Wayne?
I just wanted to make a comment further about the FTE questions that council had. I recognize that we, as administration, have really tried to ensure we don't bring any new FTEs forward to council over the last couple of years. And we recognize that that is a budget decision for council. And I just want to clarify that it's not something we're asking for today, and we're not looking for council to, you know, approve us going forward with two new FTEs. And we recognize that that will be a budget decision. And my understanding is, as part of that budget decision, while contractors and consultants, it's not the ideal scenario. It is an option that we will be, you know, having as part of these discussions. So I just wanted to clarify that piece, that it's not, you know, two new FTEs and we can't get any work done. There are some other options there.
Okay. Mayor Shigas, Ms. Cormos, and then Councilor Melnick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Ms. Travado, for that, because that was going to be one of the comments that I had, is to ensure that we have alignment with our statutory plans, and particularly the municipal development plan, as it is the preeminent planning document for all municipalities. And, you know, recognizing that our MDP had major amendments in 2017 and some subsequent minor ones since then. The land use bylaw hasn't kept pace. I do have a question on Slide 5 of Attachment 2. So identifies ideal land use bylaw outcomes. And it lists four optimal or desired results. And I'm just, I'm looking for clarification from administration on the last item, which is delivering the county's strategic vision. So just want to know what that refers to. Is it the council's strategic plan? Is it the vision statements? Does it include some of the objectives and, I guess, policy statements in our statutory plans?
Madam Chair, to Mayor Shigas, the short answer to that is it's everything that you mentioned there. One of the building blocks is specifically dedicated to engaging with various departments within the county to not only speak about the strategic plans that we're aware of, but also to seek other ones out that there might be blind spots on. So the idea is to tie that all together so that all of the guidance that council has provided through various different documents is being manifested in the land use bylaw.
Great. And my final question is, when this does go to public engagement, is the intent to include not just the proposed amendments to the land use bylaw, but some of the policy statements and the objectives that are in those statutory plans? So our residents can recognize what that guiding document is and the vision is, and to ensure that we have alignment, so they understand and don't put any, I guess, false hopes forward for themselves, because we do need to align with those statutory documents. Thanks, and that's the end of my questions.
Thank you, Ms. Cormos. Do you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to go back to the question that Mayor Shigas had about potentially contracting the land use bylaw out. And I just wanted to add to also what Mr. McGowan said. In 2009, when we went through our last major bylaw amendment, I was part of that. And we did contract it out to a planning firm at that time. And what we found after we went through that process, and perhaps Mr. McGowan recalls some of that, there was numerous amendments that had to follow because the firm that we used, they used a number of their staff, and each staff was responsible for a certain section of the land use bylaw. And it created a lot of disconnects in our land use bylaw that actually even to this day, some of them still exist from 2009. And we're always trying to play catch-up in amending those. And so that was a part of the discussion as to why we wanted to see it in-house, because they are the most familiar with the bylaw and the needs. So I just wanted to add that as well.
Thank you, Ms. Cormos. Councilor Melnick?
Thank you, and I'm not looking for a response today. I'm just throwing this out. You know, sometimes in, and I know the comment will be, this isn't business, but sometimes in business, as you come up with something new, you have to decide what's no longer relevant, what doesn't need the attention. what doesn't need the attention. And so I would be looking to Ms. Wayne and and the team of executives looking at the organization organization as a whole and saying, if we're identifying that two FTEs are required in this department to do here, is there other areas within the county that maybe we're doing items that are no longer required? We're a complete team as it goes. We're not individual departments. We need to run the organization as a whole. So so possibly, it doesn't need to be additional of two FTEs to the whole piece of Parkland County staff complement. It may be the fact that there's other departments that may not require. So I'm sure that Ms. Wayne and and the team are all looking at areas and and need to evaluate to say, is there things that should not be being continued because they're no longer as relevant as they were at one time? But again, not necessarily looking for a response. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Melnick. Ms. Wayne, you have a comment?
No comments on that. Certainly recognize those comments, and and we will look throughout the organization if we do have vacant FTEs that can fill these positions. If this is a need we deem necessary organizationally, then that's something we'll certainly look to as well.
Okay, thank you. With that, any other questions or comments? I have a motion on the floor. Councilor McNabb moved to receive this information, the presentation that was offered today. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call a question those opposed to the motion. See no one, that motion is carried. With that, Ms. Wayne, unless there's anything else, we have 8.1 and 8.2, which were included on our consent agenda. Our next committee of the whole meeting will be September 7th, and I believe we won't have to be doing any COVID preamble for for that meeting. Hopefully, everything works out, and we will revert back to normal processes. Anything else you wanted to add?
Nothing for me, Madam Chair.
Okay, but that next meeting is September 7th, and it is 12:46. I declare a meeting adjourned. Thank you.